Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the second session of this Town of Stoughton Special Town Meeting. This evening, I should say it's October 21st, and the Special Town Meeting is now called to order. This town meeting is being held via a remote platform, Zoom webinar, due to public health concerns arising from the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting is also being broadcast live through Stoughton Media Access Corporation, also being streamed on SMAC's website, and is being recorded for future broadcasting. I ask that everyone please rise if you're able, and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Next, I would like to introduce our panel guests. I'll start with the school committee again. Sandra Gropey, she's Chair of the Stoughton School Committee. Katie Peanut Inokian, she's Vice Chair, Stoughton School Committee. Dr. John Marcus, Superintendent, Stoughton Public Schools. Christine Howe, Chair of the Select Board. Stephen Kaby, Vice Chair, Select Board. Deborah Roberts, Member of the Select Board. Joseph McCrisky, he may not be on yet, but anticipated he'll be there, Member of the Select Board. Bob O'Regan, Member of the Select Board. Dr. Robin Grimm, Stoughton's Town Manager. Stephanie Carrara, Interim Town Clerk. And this evening, Ed Trumphy, the Chair of the Finance Committee, is not able to join us this evening. John Anzavino, is Acting Chair of the Finance Committee. And Bob Desmond, the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, he's not able to join us either tonight. David Laurie is Acting Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. Gene Fleming, Deputy Moderator. Lauren Goldberg, Town Council from KP Law. And joining us, I see him out there now, Mark Tisdale, Town Engineer in Development Services. Michael Hammond, he's in the studio here from Stoughton Media Access Corporation TV. All right, I now invite Select Chair Christine Howe for some announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, everyone, tonight for being here and for your patience on Monday night. I'll keep my remarks brief again, as you heard at the beginning of the meeting from our staff at MAPC. Sasha was explaining to everyone, please raise your hand to ask a question. We have a Vanna White style of board keeping over here, so as you raise your hand, we'll make your name, take your name down and call on you for questions. If you have a point of order, please put that in the Q and A. We have some folks here monitoring the Q and A, so we should be able to address those points of order. Quick updates from me, the remap survey went out yesterday. Thank you to everyone who filled it out so far. We had 70 people respond. If you could please take a look at that, if you haven't had the chance to do so, we would greatly appreciate it. We're just trying to collect some data to inform our core team, who's comprised of elected officials, town staff, representatives from the community, so really hoping that they can get some information as they begin their training and as we move into the policy part of the grant in the winter and early spring. So again, the remap survey went out. If you need that link, please reach out to me or Stephanie Patton, and we'll get that to you. One other quick update from Pam McCarthy, our Economic Development Director. Right now, we have some micro enterprise grant funding available through the Community Development Block Grant Program. So that's federal funding that was authorized through the CARES Act. We have been awarded about $400,000, so we're offering grants to businesses up to $10,000, so that could help about 40 businesses in town. You do have to be a micro enterprise that qualifies, so you have to have five or fewer employees, including the owner, and meet some income qualifying criteria, but Pam can help you out with that process. So if you are a small business owner, or if you know small business owners, please spread the word so that we can get these grants out to folks. It's been a tough time with COVID, and who knows the challenges we'll approach in the coming winter. And the last item, I believe our Town Planner, John Charbonneau, is on the line, and he has a quick update on the downtown zoning rewrite. I know you folks approved funding for a consultant to address that at our last town meeting. We were hoping for our special that we would be able to present some zoning rewrite to you, but with COVID and everything, we got slightly delayed, and as we pushed the town meeting back, we're looking at aiming for the spring for that rewrite, but wanted to give you a quick update. I'm not sure if John is on, and we can pull up his quick presentation on the zoning rewrite.
All right, we're asking with John Charbonneau. All right, Christine's gonna discuss it for a few minutes. Go ahead, Christine.
Let's do it real quick. We're having a brief technical difficulty on the slides, but I can give you guys an update instead. Let me just pull it up. So as I mentioned, the town hired a consultant to assist with the zoning rewrite. We went through an RFP process and hired Horsey Witten Group. And despite the delays, the project is actually still on budget. And one of the benefits to kind of bringing this out a little further to next spring is we'll have a more engaged public process. We did already have tremendous engagement through our survey that we conducted over the spring. I think almost 800 people responded to that survey, so we were able to get input on the downtown zoning and its limitations as they exist currently, and proposed some potential changes with the district to allow for different uses in different areas. And in addition, we have some draft regulations already begun by the consultants, and those will go to Downtown Redevelopment Task Force. So what the task force will do is review those draft guidelines, and those will also go to the Planning Board, and we'll have the Select Board look at those. And we'll also have a few public hearings over the course of, as we look at these zoning bylaw changes, so that folks can provide feedback. And the plan is to get those to the town meeting for the spring annual town meeting for review and approval. So we're kind of, we're on track. We're a little bit off track as we were aiming for December, January of this year, but I think, as I said, this will allow for a more engaged public process, and we should hopefully be able to have the zoning rewrite come in for this spring town meeting. So if anybody has any questions on that, please reach out to me or John Charbonneau, our Town Planner, and stay tuned for more information so that you can get involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Now, I just want to say, mention to everybody watching us this evening that, let you all know who's present in the Town Hall this evening with us. We have Lauren Goldberg, Town Council from KP Law. We have Gene Fleming, Deputy Town Moderator. We have Christine Howe, the Chair of the Stoughton Select Board. We have Stephanie Carrara, Interim Town Clerk. We have Trish Strapshire from the IT Department. We have Cynthia Walsh, Town Meeting Rep, Precinct 2. She's here because she doesn't have any Wi-Fi, we're trying to help that out. We have Phyllis Kelleher, also, she happens to be from Precinct 2 also, and she has no computer access this evening. And we also have David Laurie, Acting Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, help us out with some information tonight. All right, so at this point in time, we have Mark Zemanian, raise hand. Mark, do you have a point of order, Mr. Zemanian? If we can let, allow Mark Zemanian to speak, unmute him. Mark, please state your name, your precinct number, and if you have a point of, what your point is.
Hi, Mr. Moderator, thank you. My point of order was actually, I received a phone call from John Charbonneau. He has not received a link to this, tonight's meeting, so he was unable to participate in that update. He apologizes, but he still needs that link so he can possibly present tonight. That's all, Mr. Moderator.
I'll forward that to him right now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. All right, I think we're ready. Well, let me just say a couple of things, a couple of other comments. Because we are using, as we did on Monday night, Zoom webinar, we're being virtual, we all need to be a little patient. The technology is not perfect for our needs, wasn't designed to have town meetings, but we're making it useful for what we can do, we're making it work for the best. Select Chair Christine Howe will be writing down those people who raise their hands who wish to speak on each article. And Vice, Acting Vice Chair David Laurie is gonna write down anybody that makes points of orders, points of information, just to help clarify and make everything as transparent as we possibly can through this virtual environment. So at this time, we will suspend, suspend our usual precinct count and instead do attendance by using polled software. So I'm gonna ask our IT people to try to bring up that poll for attendance. And I ask all the town meeting reps to click "Present" when you see that poll, once it appears on your screens. All right, there's the poll in front of you, please click "Present." We do give you an opportunity to say "Not applicable" and "A" if you chose. Either or, please vote now, you have 20 seconds. 10 seconds. Okay, if we can close the poll, please, and provide us the results. All right, as you can see, are you present? 118 replied yes, one said "N/A." So we have 119 town meeting representatives connected virtually to this evening. We have 166 town meeting rep seats filled, so 84 is considered a quorum. We do have a quorum present tonight, having 119 town meeting reps present. I'm sorry, I correct that, 120, including Stephanie Carrara? Yeah, she was out of the office, moving, helping us a little bit. So 120 town meeting reps are present this evening. All right, I think we're ready to go right to the next article. Okay. All right, I was just told we had a little technical issue here, demoting people from the panel, back down to the vote. You wanna relaunch the vote? All right, I'm, I'm told for clarity, we're gonna just relaunch that poll so everybody can just vote again. We'll relaunch it when everybody's...
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
I'm on a shared link with, with Dr. Grimm. I also did not receive a, a link in the, in the email.
Oh, okay.
So if it's possible, I might have to receive another link so that I can be demoted and also vote. No, no, I appreciate your help, thank you.
Okay. Steve Kaby, just be with us for a minute. I'm just gonna mute myself so I can just mention to the technical team to fix that for you. Steve Kaby, if I could ask you, the IT department's gonna send you a new link, just be with us for a minute.
Absolutely, I'll hop off of this link, thank you very much.
Just let me know, why don't you stay on until you see that email?
Sure.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Maybe we should have done back-to-back nights where everybody'd be really familiar with all the technology and everything here. But we'll get through it this evening.
Mr. Moderator, I've received the links, I'm going to hop off and, and enter with the other link.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Kaby, appreciate it.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, you're muted right now?
Yeah, I know, I was just, thanks, Mr. Kaby, I was just talking to someone present here. If I had a singing voice, I'd sing a song here this evening, but you don't wanna hear me.
I can't help you on that one either.
Can you join in, Robin?
Okay, I'll join in, but it may be ugly, you get a lot of muting of me.
All right. Okay, we're gonna relaunch the poll. Here we go, there's the poll. All right, at this time, please vote again whether you're present. You have 20 seconds. Every town meeting rep who's, who's online should be able to vote. 10 more seconds. All right, can we end the poll, please? All right, here we are. Present is saying yes, is 122. N/A is one, and plus we have Elliot Hanson, who is unable to vote this evening virtually, so we're gonna add him. Three, four, so we have 124 Tommy reps present and counted for. So, and a quorum is 166, excuse me, a quorum needed is 84, so we have enough to continue our meeting. We have 124 town meeting reps present, thank you. You can end the poll, close the poll, please, all right. We have two questions. Chuck Collins? Can we unmute Chuck Collins, please? Mr. Collins? When you get unmuted, mute yourself and just state your name and precinct number, please. And... We're just trying to have Mr. Collins unmuted.
Uh, Moderator, this is Emily from IT.
Yes, Emily, go ahead.
We have Chat available to speak, he just needs to unmute. Chat, if you can hear us, you just need to unmute.
Well, Chat, why don't we keep Chat right on that screen while Chat's trying to unmute? We have George Stolinski. George, can you unmute yourself, go ahead, identify yourself, George, and your precinct number.
George Stolinski, Precinct 2. Just a point of information, Mr. Moderator. In the recently published Town of Stoughton Town Moderator Procedures, on page 8, section 6, it says Zoom allows 25 polls per meeting session. How close are we to that limit of 25?
Monday night's polls don't count, so I believe we have 14 articles to do tonight, if we make it. We have reserved 20 for this evening. So whip in good shape, I believe, George.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not doing anything that's gonna affect the, this great type of meeting here.
Yeah, we'll try not to have anything affect the virtual meeting tonight, but thank you for your question, George.
No problem.
Appreciate it, have a good evening, we'll talk to you probably a little later.
You know it.
All right, we have Deborah Roberts, Member of the Select Board.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, hello, Mr. Moderator. I was unable to vote for the initial attendance, but I was able to vote the second go-round. Will that skew your numbers for who was present?
No, will not, Ms. Roberts, because you were in the, we took the most recent poll, so you would have been included in the most recent poll of 124 town meeting reps.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Collins, Chuck Collins, if you can unmute yourself, we'll try to see if we can. Okay, at the bottom of your screen, Chat, you should be able to... Erdem? Okay, we'll wait for Chat to unmute himself. Next up is Dr. Erdem Yural. Can you identify yourself, doctor, and your precinct number?
Erdem Yural, Precinct 7. Good evening, everybody, thank you for joining again. My question is, you mentioned, Mr. Moderator, that Mr. Hanson cannot vote. How do I know I can vote?
You voted in the poll, Mr. Yural, did you vote in the poll, Dr. Yural?
Yeah, but I don't know how that gets recorded.
Well, we record it behind the scenes, sir. So if you saw the poll come up and you clicked on the poll, present, you'll be fine. You're all set, you were included in the vote.
Mr. Hanson could not see the window.
Right, let's just, right, let's just take care of you, sir. You'll be all set, we're working with Mr. Hanson, he'll be voting separately with us. Right, the IT team, IT team is taking care of him, so are you all set, Mr. Yural?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yural. All right, I think we're ready, we got anybody else to? Okay, next up, John Anzavino.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening, John.
John Anzavino, Precinct 4, and the interim Acting Finance Committee Chairman, however you wanna put it. My question to you, Bob, is since I'm gonna be doing these motions for the FINCOM, and if I have to answer questions for anybody that might have question for the FINCOM, am I gonna have control of my mic, or am I gonna have to raise my hand to get in and out all the time?
I'm gonna ask the IT to keep him. Okay. Okay, in order, I'm told by the IT department that, John, when I call upon the FINCOM Committee report, they're gonna bring you in.
Okay.
Okay, and then we just gotta make sure you get back into the room so you can vote.
Okay, so they can't just leave this, they can't just leave the mic control here?
Uh, one minute, please, I'm gonna just...
Thing is, for me to allow him to vote when you say "John."
Okay. Ms. Anzavino, the best way it was explained to me is, it's easier if they control the situation from behind the scenes. They'll bring you in to speak, and they wanna put you back to make sure you can vote, it's just...
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure. Cause I didn't know why you were doing it with that, if you had him in the panel and you were moving him over to vote back and forth, I didn't know. That's what I wanted to find out before we really got rolling.
John, I promise I won't forget about you, I know there's a lot going on, but I have a big star next to your name.
No problem, I don't wanna delay this any longer, thank you very much.
Okay, great, I think we're all set, let's get moving here. Chuck Collins is still on my screen here. Chat, one last time, Chat, are you good? Can you unmute yourself? Okay, scene 80, nothing's going on there. All right, I think we're ready to go to an article here. Article 9, it should be on page 9 of the warrant. And once we get that presentation up, I'm gonna ask Dr. Grimm, Town Manager, to make... I should say, excuse me one second, I gotta, just give me one moment here. I can ask John Anzavino to make the motion. So John needs to, go ahead, John, sorry.
Apparently, they've changed this from what was in the book. So I move that the town vote to appropriate sufficient sums of money from the Building Stabilization Fund for maintenance, extraordinary maintenance, improvements, repairs, upgrades, modifications, and the like at town-owned building and facilities, including but not limited to, as applicable, professional engineering, architectural services, design, site preparation, and demolition, installation, and all other incidental and related costs as set forth, and for the amount shown in the chart appearing in the recommendations of the Committee on Finance and Taxation, and shown on the following screen, with each line to be considered a separate appropriation.
Is there a second? Seconded by Christine Howe. All right, John, can you also read the FINCOM report?
Yes, let me, let me turn the page.
Sure.
The FINCOM voted 15 to nothing to recommend this to town meeting.
All right. Christine Howe, could you read the Municipal Operations Committee report, if you don't mind? On page 11?
The Municipal Operations Committee voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval to town meeting.
Okay, thank you all. All right, next up is Dr. Robin Grimm, uh, town manager, for a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this is pretty straightforward. As I said last night, we try to maintain our infrastructure, um, on a consistent basis so that we don't get too far behind and we don't have to spend too much money to maintain our buildings and infrastructure. These are basic maintenance, uh, capital-level maintenance, um, projects. We did trim it down a bit and cut out what we could. But these are the things that if we leave too long without addressing, ultimately more damage ends up happening. So we scaled it back as best as we could, but, uh, these are all part of the master plan, of the facilities master plan that Paul Jafun, um, works with and scrutinizes and, um, makes recommendations to me on, um, what needs to be done each year. Again, we scaled it back as best as we could because we want to keep things light for COVID, but we... because of the COVID situation, but we don't want to get where we let certain things go too long and end up with repairs that are double and triple the cost. So Paul, I believe, should be on this evening if there are any questions for him, uh, on specific details. But that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay, we have Liz Norden. Liz, can you... When you, when you come in, please identify yourself and precinct number, please.
Hello?
Yes, can you identify yourself?
Yeah, this is Peter Brown.
Oh, Peter Brown. And precinct number, please?
Um, precinct two.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'm not certain how my sister's, uh, account got listed here.
There you go, they just changed your name for you.
Okay, thank you. Um, my question has to do with the actual expenditures being requested. Um, I guess I'd like to know if, uh, with the growing infrastructure and the fact that we have a aging infrastructure, and we look to add more buildings and things of this nature, how much work, um, of this, the upgrades and enhancements, whatever, are going to be done by the Town of Stoughton employees? Or is it all contracted out to contractors?
I'll I'll defer to Paul Jafun if he's on about that. I know we do a lot of work in-house. We do some carpentry work. We have some pretty skilled people in our department. But I will defer to Paul on exactly how much we have to outsource versus how much we have internally.
Paul, are you on?
Yes, sir.
It's all yours. Take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, well, actually, with with this level of repair, there won't be that many dollars that we can save in-house. Some of these are, uh, capital expenditures that are a long time coming. Um, so I would say of the eight thirty-two requested, probably, I'd say we... It would be good for us if we could get thirty thousand of that done in-house.
Uh... No, am I still on?
Yes, you are.
Oh, okay. So are the eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars requested to repair and upgrade buildings? Um, I believe the facilities manager said only thirty thousand of that can be, um, uh, used by, uh, town employees. Is that, is that right?
Paul? Paul Jafun?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, is that something that, uh, we're going to take a look at? Um, changing, Mr. Moderator, through you two, the facilities manager, all the town manager? I mean, we have a host of buildings in town, and there seems to be a list of growing more. And if these are the types of improvements that are going to be needed, in some cases, I understand there's lots of dollars. Is there going to be some sort of workforce that the town puts together that does do this work?
That that that's a fair question, Mr. Brown. I I think if we had, let's say, we sought consistently the need for, uh, a plumber, and we were always spending money contracting out a plumber, and Paul came to me and said, we have this much plumbing work, let's hire a plumber. I think we would, but the problem is that if you look at the the variety of of things on this list, it's not any one's skill set particularly. I mean, painting and things, sure, we can do those types of things. Maybe some of the mill work in the parking lot we can do with our DPW employees. Um, so we have things that we can do, but like major rooftop unit work, um, replacing the the fans and the coil units, uh, major pipe installation. We just don't have the skill set, and and we wouldn't... It would be hard to find any one person with that skill set. So quite often, we do have to contract out. Uh, uh, if we had a broader, um, if we were larger, let's say, and we had enough to support having a a full-time plumber and a full-time electrician, for example, we would. I just don't think we have enough projects to to warrant it. And it it, there's just, we're not at that tipping point.
Okay, and that and that and that's pretty helpful. I appreciate that. Um, my only other question is when we're paying outside, um, are we paying, is there some term, uh, fee? Uh, there's a number, don't we have to pay like a certain number for contractors or?
Prevailing wage?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
And isn't that quite higher than normal if we had our own staff doing it?
Yeah, well, you know, prevailing wage, and I'll defer to Paul on how, what qualifies under that. For example, if it's something done with federal funds, it always has to be prevailing wage, no matter what.
Okay.
Um, Paul, I don't know specifically, and or Fran is on, she may be on, when we procure, if, uh, when we go off the contracts on this, if there's a prevailing wage in some of these construction projects. Fran Brutini might be on, um, or Paul might be able to answer that question.
Okay, I mean, it's, you don't have to answer it now, just, I was just curious. I understand that there are certain skills that are needed in our cases. You don't have somebody that's going to do this and whatnot.
Mr. Brown, I'm going to hold you, I'm going to have to hold you up there. We need to move on.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much for your comments and questions. Thank you. Uh, next up is George Stolinski. George, when you're allowed to talk, please identify yourself and precinct number.
George Stolinski, precinct two, Mr. Moderator. Just a couple of quick questions. Uh, I know Peter Brown asked a couple of things, but noticing number B, uh, the council on aging, modify sinks and fixtures, how many for the twenty-eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars are we talking about?
Don't forget to answer that, Paul Jafun? Or Dr. Grimm? Paul?
I can answer that. Um, that's one sink in the kitchen. That's, so what goes into... This kind of, um, leads back into Mr. Brown's question. So the these costs are estimated at a prevailing wage. Everything we have to, everything we do, we contract out, must be paid at a prevailing wage, which on average is about thirty percent more than some, you would get someone to do something at your own house for. Um, so that, that really drives the cost way up.
All right, so what's, so what you're saying is that the council on aging, we got one sink being paid for with whatever fixtures for twenty-eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars, very expensive sink, okay? Now, at town hall, we've got the same item, modify sinks and fixtures for thirty-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. How many sinks and, uh, fixtures are we talking about there?
Six.
Six.
Those are diff... Those, they're not the, it's not apples to apples. They're they're different, different fixtures.
Right, okay. Now, the other thing is, I just wanted to ask, on some of these items that you have in here, uh, the flooring and the, uh, uh, the scrape and repaint of the DPW building for, uh, that one is seventy-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, how many people do you usually go out to bid on this product or these projects? I'm sorry.
Um, uh, through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, within the last few years, we've, on bigger projects, we've gotten five to eight bidders consistently on any project over fifty thousand.
All right, now, how did you come up with a price of seventy-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars versus eighty thousand or sixty thousand? Are you using, planning on using Rhino Shield or just regular paint?
Uh, not planning on using Rhino Shield. Uh, these, these prices come directly from the facilities master plan, which was updated, uh, in two thousand seventeen.
Uh, that's three years, so we could have, we'll have another increase on top of that, I would presume.
Well, yes and no. It could be, could be higher, it could be lower. Some of these, most of these items that are on here are for year three, which we're in now. So they estimated with those escalation factors in three years ago, if that makes sense.
Oh, it does. Uh, I said for my questions on this item, it's just some of the numbers just look a little strange, that's all.
Chat, Mr. Stolinski?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Tony Souza. Tony, when you come in, please identify yourself and your precinct number.
Am I on?
Yes, you are, Mr. Souza. Please, uh...
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My question is in line with...
Precinct number, Mr. Souza.
I'm sorry, yes, Antonio Souza, precinct three.
Thank you.
And my question is, uh, far one, the previous two speakers in regards to all these projects. Some of the questions were answered, some I don't think was, were. Have you received the quotations for all these projects? And why aren't they given to the town meeting reps to know exactly the scope of the work? Like, we have, uh, prep squad roofing in detail, the scope of the work. None of these projects have any scope of the work being done. I think it's unfair that we don't know exactly what's being done. And my biggest concerns is the parking lot, the public works, and if somebody can explain to me what's mill and overlay parking lot? Can somebody explain to me exactly what mill and overlay? Maybe Paul can?
Yeah, the the, oh, okay, go ahead, Paul.
Um, I'm... So I apologize. I know there were a few questions in there. Um, in regard to the mill and overlay of the parking lot, it's grinding up the asphalt and repaving. Uh, with that comes the adjustment of castings, um, maybe drainage structures, um, maybe some curbing, some concrete work, so there's a lot that is entailed with that. And and I'm sorry, I don't remember the other questions.
Well, the, uh, the reason that is, I I just wish the, all the scope of the work was being sent, given to the town meeting reps. And the reason I'm questioning that, and I'm also questioning the fire department. I took it on myself to drive by the fire department and the public works, parking, parking lot. Uh, the fire department, it says to be around, the block top is going to be done around the fire department. There's all your parking lot on the right side of the station that looks good to me. On the left side, I agree it needs to be done. But it's, nothing's being specific, exactly what's being done. I understand what you said about milling and, um, it's grinding the stuff away. And the reason I'm raising these questions, and my company's parking lot is being done right now, and I have exactly the scope of the work being done, and it, the manager seems to be outrageous. I'm doing a twenty-six thousand, seven hundred square feet of parking lot. All the asphalt is being removed. Then we get four inches of recycled base, we get two inches of a binder, an inch and a half of topping. I mean, it's a ton of this price. It's something that doesn't sound right, even though we don't even know how many square feet are being done. I just, and I don't even think the parking lot at the public garage needs to be done, except for the back, back, back parking lot, a piece of his new asphalt there. Then there's the enclosary that I could not drive through because the gates were closed. I see some of the cracks have been hot sealed. I don't know. In these difficult times, I just think this is a wish list, even though I agree we're supposed to maintain our facilities. I think these prices are outrageous. And not having any information from requ... From the quotes you receive, I think it's unfair for us to even think of voting on such a much...
Mr. Souza, I'm going to have to hold you there.
That's fine. Can I ask some answers to my question?
Well, can, Paul, Paul Jafun, can you answer one of those questions for him?
Yes, sir. Um, so again, I I would say to Mr. Sou... When Mr. Souza's company is doing that, his company may or may not be, but I'm guessing not paying prevailing wages for that work. Um, also, at the fire station, uh, all the the equipment, the apparatus that goes, uh, that drives on that every day, multiple times a day, parking for the employees, um, it has really taken a beating over the years. So again, this will entail a little drainage work. We just did all new granite curb and all new concrete sidewalks and concrete aprons there. This is kind of the final piece that will, um, tie it all together. Shouldn't have to touch anything on the site, per se, for another fifteen years or so, uh, if if this money was approved. Um, you know, and and as for the DPW and some other locations, um, I I just would have to disagree that the work does have to be done.
Okay, thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Souza.
Most of all, enough, Mr. Moderator.
Next up is Mr. Richard Terry. Mr. Terry, when you, um, when you unmute, uh, please identify yourself and your precinct number.
Uh, Richard Terry, precinct six. My question is to our facilities manager, Paul. Um, the, um, funding that you're requesting is, I was wondering what structures or properties that the town owns, other than the school system, is not included? And I'll mention one property. The McNamara Farm on West Street that we acquired some years ago. Um, Paul, could you, do you, Mr. Moderator, could you expand on that concept?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm, I'm not sure of the question. What what properties are not included in what?
In in the...
Could you rephrase that?
Uh, yes, I will. Um, are there any properties within Stoughton that come under your, uh, your purveage that may not be included in the, uh, fundings that you're requesting for, uh, maintenance of our town-owned properties? And I, I use, uh, as an example, the McNamara Farm barn on West Street, which we acquired some years ago with that acreage.
I, I, are you asking what was not in the two thousand seventeen master plan? Because everything that Paul puts on his list is basically from the two thousand seventeen master plan, which included all the facilities at the time. Now, something like Randolph Savings Bank probably would be in that, if that's the question you're asking, of something we've acquired since then. Um, but there's nothing being requested for any of those, or else they would be on that list now.
Thank you very, thank you.
Did that, did that answer the question? I'm not sure if I answered your question.
It did. It did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Uh, next up is Richard Fitzgerald. Mr. Fitzgerald, when you, when you're able to talk, please identify yourself and your precinct number. All right, we still have, while he's coming in, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven more people in line to speak on this article.
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Uh, yes, Mr. Fitzgerald, your name and precinct number, please.
Dick Fitzgerald, precinct three. Thank you for, uh, taking, uh, taking my, uh, my call here, my message. Uh, to answer a couple of questions prior, can I do that before I get into anything?
What, answer some, wait, Mr. Fitzgerald, hang on, you, uh, we have Mr. Jafun on and also Dr. Robin Grimm. They're answering the questions. So, um, if you have a question or a statement, feel free to s... to say that. But we have a couple, uh, people answering the questions already. I appreciate your support, but...
I was just going to try to help Paul see on how I was the chairman of the facilities master plan, that's all. Give some people some ideas. I want to bring, uh, this is a, the facilities master plan, the original was presented to the town in two, in, uh, two thousand and ten. Uh, and that had a list, uh, going back to, uh, the town manager's explanation, a list of buildings and properties that we needed to have done, uh, to have looked at. And then that expanded in the two thousand and seventeen version, okay? Uh, all of this that Mr. Jafun works off of is from those facilities master plans, both of them. But there's questions about whether or not we should or should do this project or go forward. Paul's done a great job coming up with these numbers, and as he stated, they do come directly from the facilities master plan. I bring everyone's attention to, A, council on aging, painting and repairs. Now, that total there is forty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. Uh, let me just refresh, if I can, the original two thousand and ten, uh, uh, facilities master plan had for counseling on aging, uh, it says painting and repairs. We were going to be doing painting, uh, trim painting, caulkeding, scraping, repair any fascia boards, and that cost in the year two thousand and ten was a little over eleven thousand dollars. Not doing it, waiting, ten years down the road, that's escalated four times. That's just a small example. That's just a small example. So you have to repair it, you have to spend the money. The town spent $100, uh, $200,000 appropriated. The spending, okay, the spending up to $200,000. We spent $136,000 in the first one, I believe it was, and then, uh, $178 in the second. Okay? To tell everybody what we need to do. The numbers can be staggering, but we own the property. We don't maintain it, it's just going to come back and it's just gonna multiply. So I urge you to support this. That's what we did the studies for. I know the numbers might look staggering, but we have to maintain the property. If we don't do that, we'll be spending an awful lot more. Again, the council on aging, painting repairs, a little over $11,000, I believe it was, and now we're at $41,872. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Fitzgerald, uh, next up is Jim Garren. Jim, when you come in, please state your name and precinct number.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Garren?
Jim Garren, precinct six. My questions are asked and answered during the course of a conversation here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is, we have Jim from local 1512. I'm not, I, I apologize, I don't know what lo- 1812, I believe. I don't know what local 1812 is. Jim? I believe, okay, I just heard in the background, fire department. My apologies to the firemen, I didn't recognize the local number. Jim, when you're ready, please identify yourself, first and last name and your precinct number. Jim, you need to unmute. We'll give you another couple of, about 10 seconds, Jim, to try to unmute. We can come back to you. All right, uh, Scott Carrara. Yeah. Jim, local, is it 15 or 1812? 1512 having a problem muting, so, uh, we're gonna bring in Scott Carrara, he's next on the list.
Mr. Chairman, am I, I mean, Mr. Moderator, am I on?
Yes, you are, sir. Please state your name and, um, precinct number.
Scott Carrara, precinct two. Um, just a little heads up, it's all well and good to, uh, say, oh, let's hire people in and they can do, uh, a piece of plumbing here, and then let's hire somebody to paint here and do this. Sometimes you gotta contract these things out due to the size and the magnitude of the work. It saves the town on insurance, vehicles. Speed and timing is an issue all the time when these projects start. You can't be sidelined or moved to a different area because they need help over a different area. These, these bids go out, the people have to come in, they gotta perform. They gotta post a bond and warranty the work. We hire five guys to be the experts to paint and be plumbers and all that. When certain jobs are over, they're all gonna be staring at each other, and they're all gonna belong to unions, and then everybody's gonna crab about, why are they getting pay raises? I can't believe what's happening. So sometimes things have to be bid out so that you really get general experts in a team of them. If the guy's gotta bring in five guys to do a roof, he's gotta bring in five guys to do a roof. We can't have two guys fighting to do a roof and then ask for help from the public works and take them from their jobs. So some stuff just has to be done outsourced. And to help Mr. Terry out, the McNamara purchase was the land only, that bond was not purchased with the land. That bond was still part of, um, the house to the site. That's not into the properties under the care and custody control of the Conservation Commission. So if they wanted something done, they'd have to put something forth, not Paul Jafun and the master facilities, uh, stuff. So that's where that is. So that's all I wanted to say, Mr., um, Moderator.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carrara. Okay, thank you, uh... Okay, if we can hear from Jim from local 1512 again, I saw him posted, it looks like someone might have taken him off again. Give him a chance to come back in. Jim from local 1512. Okay, while we're trying to do that, and when he comes in, please leave him...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, identify yourself, please.
Yeah, I'm all set. Precinct four, I'm all set. Already answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtin. Okay, next up is Mr. John Inzavino.
Hi, Mr. Moderator, thank you. Um, just two quick points.
Precinct, precinct four, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, precinct four. I'm on as the FinCon chair, um, the, the representative, uh... When this motion was made, it was to take all of this money out of stabilization, the building stabilization. And then during the course of talking, uh, Mr. Jafun said, well, some of it might be able to be done. And so the question would be, are we still gonna be taking money out of the stabilization fund to pay for that, if it's gonna be done by in-house people? Um, or, or should this number be revised for what we're gonna be borrowing? That's the first question. And then the second one, if Mr. Rowe is on, if he could just, uh, maybe inform the people of how much money is in that building stabilization fund, so they know how much we're taking out and what would be left.
Yes, we did have a question on that, which was gonna, was gonna ask next, but go ahead, uh, Mr. Rowe, if you're on. If you could just give us a, the, the dollar amount in that account.
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mr. Rowe. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, Bill Row, town accountant. Um, we have $2,367,908. $2,367,908.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Inzavino, I'm sorry, what was your first question?
The first question was for Mr. Jafun. He mentioned that, uh, you know, you might get $30,000 by doing this with in-house people. But if we're looking to take all this money out of stabilization, it should be what we're spending to get this work done. So my question would be, if we're, are we looking to take money out of stabilization to pay the people to do the work? Should we be revising the number on what would actually be taken out of stabilization, and the rest would just be, you know, I, I'd just like him to explain that.
Okay. Paul Jafun or Dr. Graham, whoever can explain that?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Moderator, through you. Um, so I, I think what I said was that possibly we could do about $30,000 of this, possibly. Some of the minor plumbing stuff and insulation type stuff. Um, but like Mr. Carraras, um, just stated about hiring contractors and bigger projects, and this is the way we have to do things. That's for the great, that would be what we need to do for the great majority of this article. Um, I'm not too well versed on how the money gets taken out of stabilization versus borrowing, and I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know how to answer that question regarding...
Yeah, I think, I, I think because it's not any one project that we can say for sure would be done in-house. It might be, for example, that on the COA painting and repairs, we might be able to do a little bit of work that when we bid it out, might save $2,000 or $3,000 ahead of time, or $4,000 ahead of time. But just specifically at this point, no, we really wouldn't. It's more when we go out and put the specs together for the job, I think, Paul, uh, you know, Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's more how I envision this money. Not that it's $30,000 off any one project, like when we say with capital purchases, this can be purchased out of free cash, for example. This is one of those, if we can knock off a little prep work, we will save ourselves some money, maybe bidding it out and doing it in-house. But it's not something we would know upfront.
All right, so you wouldn't take the money out of the stabilization fund until you knew you needed?
I, I would, I would, Bill, I don't, uh, Bill Rowe, I would defer to on how, when the timing of that money comes out to pay the bills.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, go ahead, Doc, uh, Mr. Rowe.
Um, the, um, the money would be transferred out of stabilization as soon as town meeting authorizes it. And then, um, you know, it would just sit there, it would be available for use. And then once the project is closed, or there's the, you know, there's the three-year sunset rule. Once the project is closed, the department head would notify our office, and then we would close the project and make it available for other articles. And, um, it would have to be, you know, two-thirds vote for, um, to transfer to other articles. Or would it? No, probably need to be a majority vote to transfer other articles. It's just two-thirds to take it out.
All right, is that any to your question, Mr. Inzavino? When do we try to...
As far as salaries go, there's very, there's very limited, limited circumstances where you can use, um, special purpose articles to pay salaries. Uh, you know, if you have clerk of the works, that's a town employee for a construction project, that would be one example where you, you could pay for salaries with a special purpose article.
Yeah, I, and I don't anticipate that would ever be what we're talking about here. We're, we're simply talking about, Mr. Inzavino, if there's some prep work that our internal guys could do while they're on their regular clock, for example.
Right. Uh, my point was just, if we're taking money out of the stabilization, it's gone, it's out. And, you know, I just didn't think we should be pulling money out if you're not expecting to spend it, so... Be that as it is, I, I don't want to, uh, I don't want to drag this on any longer. We're already in over, over an hour, and we are still on the... All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Jafun, Mr. Rowe, and, and Dr...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Inzavino. We're just trying to move on. Uh, Mr. Joe McDonough? After, if I could just say after Mr. McDonough, we still have two, four, five more speakers who would like to say something. Joe McDonough, when you're in, please state your name and precinct number.
Joe McDonough, precinct six. Uh, just a quick question, we were talking about prevailing wage earlier. And, uh, my question is, if they could just elaborate on, uh, Dr. Graham had mentioned that prevailing wage is usually for federal grants and stuff like that. We're spending money out of our capital budget. Why does it have to be a prevailing wage, just so people know why these numbers are the way they are? Um, if, can it, are only certain companies allowed to bid on these jobs? Can we not use our in-town companies that are smaller companies? Why do we have to use prevailing wage on these jobs?
Mr. Moderator?
Uh, go ahead, Paul.
This is Paul Jafun.
Who wants to, who wants to answer that, I guess?
I'll, I'll speak.
Okay.
Um, through you, Mr. Moderator, um, at, at the risk of alienating my boss, I, I, she's incorrect. Any, any work that we subcontract out must be prevailing wage for any project, no matter where it comes from.
Yeah, I wasn't sure specifically on all of ours. I just was saying that I do know that federal, we have to. But I guess on all of our, on all of ours as well, then.
Can I just ask everybody to just, you know, shorten your answers, if you don't mind? We're just, uh, going, uh, pretty long.
So could you...
I want to just, Joe, Joe McDonough, do you have another quick question?
Yeah, it was just, can they explain what the prevailing wage is? So why, you say it's 30% higher, is it, what is prevailing wage? So people understand what, what's going on here. Can they not hire just an average guy, or do they have to hire the union? Or what is prevailing wage?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Okay.
The Rowe, is it?
Okay, yeah, in, in general, just, just in, in general, uh, any construction or repair of town property requires payment of prevailing wage. Uh, go ahead, Paul.
Uh, okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Moderator, through you. The, uh, prevailing wages are based on the, the union rates, um, that are set by all the big union halls. Um, we do not have to hire union companies. Non-union companies just have to, uh, sign an affidavit that they do in fact pay workers prevailing wages when they work on anything on our property.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Mr. McDonough?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is, uh, Sandra Souza. Will you come in, Ms. Souza? Can you state your name and precinct number, please?
Sure. Hi, Bob. Uh, hello, everyone. I'm Sandra Souza, precinct one. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, go right ahead, please.
All right, great. Um, I'd like to move the question, please.
Okay, the question has been moved and seconded. Cynthia Walsh, seconded by Cynthia Walsh. All right, we're gonna, uh, use the raised hands. Is there any points of order out there that we know of?
No, it's not a point of order. No. It's not, that's not how we're doing it.
All right, I'm just getting clarification from the team here behind the scenes. All right, sorry, Sandra, I, we are taking your, uh...
No problem.
...vote on the, uh, stopping debate.
Yep, no problem, no problem.
All right, thank you for understanding.
You're welcome.
All right, at this time, we're gonna use the raised hands for the, uh... Okay, we gotta lower all hands first. Give us a moment to lower the hands, and I'll get the, the words from the IT team after the hands are lowered. This cuts off debate. We have one, two, three, four people in line that want to talk. Please, everybody, put your hand down right now. We good? All right, at this point, to cut off debate, all those in favor, raise your hand, please. 10 seconds. All right, that should be good enough. All right. Let's clear the raised hands, please. I also have to ask the IT team, do we hear from Elliot Hanson, his vote?
Uh, yes, Elliot Hanson's hand was up.
Oh, was up, okay, so he's okay to raise his hand. Okay, great, thank you. Just can't do the polls. Just for clarification for everybody. Elliot Hanson, uh, just for some reason can't see the polls, but he raised his hand, I just want everybody to know. Uh, so he is voting on the matter. All right, are the raised hands clo- uh, down now? They're down, okay, all those oppose, please raise your hand. It's two-thirds, right? All right, can I get a count on the raised hands?
14.
14. So to cut off the base, 104, yes, 14, no. So the motion passes. We're ready to vote on the Article nine. All right, um, as in past, um, we voted by building, or I should say by department. I'd like to do that the same way in case anybody wants to... Just one second.
Mr. Moderator, I thought this one was gonna go as one unit. I may be wrong.
I'd like to, uh, I talked to, um, the facilities manager, in the past, we did it by department, so I'd like to do it as we did in the past. Ready with those polls, so one poll at a time, and it has the dollar amounts on it. I just want to be consistent as we did in the prior years. Yeah, like A, you know, council of aging A and B. So that should be the first poll, once it comes up. Okay, I think we're ready for the first poll. Okay, this is the council of aging items. Total is $44,752. And that's for A and B, which, which is repair and paint, and, and B is modify sinks and fixtures. Vote yes, no, or abstain. Please vote now. 10 seconds, please. All right, can we end the poll and reveal the results? All right, as you see on the screen, yes, 121, no, nine, and abstain, two. And we have one extra one for yes. So that's 122 for yes, nine, no, two abstentions. Motion passes. Can we close the poll? All right, now we're gonna prepare the vote on the next department, which is DPW, for those items under the DPW. Again, this is all on Article Nine, but we're on doing the DPW, so that'd be letters C, D, E, F, and G. As you see the poll in front of you now, item C, D, E, F, G, I'm sorry, and H and I. Right, the total of six-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand and fifty-four dollars. Please vote now. Okay, ten more seconds. All right, uh, let's close the poll and provide the results, please. As you can see on the screen, yes, 101, no, 26, zero abstentions, and we're just waiting for one extra vote. And a yes, okay. So the total is yes, 102, no, 26, zero abstentions. Motion passes. Thank you all. Okay, now we're gonna set up the poll for the next one. All right, um... Okay, we're gonna set up for the next one, uh, which is just, um, J on page 10, Fire Station. Go ahead with the poll, please, for the, uh, Fire Department, Fire Station Number Two, Replace Paving Around Building. The poll's ready to be posted, there's the poll, as you see the poll. Please begin voting now. This is just the one on, um, on the Fire Station Number Two, Replace Paving Around Building, for a total of eighty-six thousand, three hundred. All right, ten more seconds. I just reiterate, it all requires two-thirds vote. All right, uh, if we can end the poll and provide the answers, I should say, all right, uh, yes is 106, 20 plus one extra, 21, and three abstentions. That motion passes also. We can close that poll. I appreciate everybody, you know, being patient with this process. That was the Fire Station we just voted on. The next one is Town Hall. And we're ready to provide the polls when people are ready, okay. On the screen, you now see the poll for Town Hall. Total items are thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Total hall items, you have the, uh, replace, I should, I'll, I'll read it right from the list here, pipe installation, the sink and fixtures, broken brick, reset granite cap. All right, please vote. All right, can we reveal the results of the poll? All right, 115 plus one is 116 for yes, 11, no, abstentions, one. The motion passes. And that concludes Article Nine, thank you all very much. All right, well, let me just reset my paperwork here, let's move on to Article Ten, Water Master Plan. In your warrant books, it's on page 11, starts on page 11. Uh, Mr. Anzavino, John Anzavino, could you read the motion, please?
Had to wait to get unmuted.
Oh, I understand, whatever you're ready.
You still have the, uh, you still have the screen set for the last article, and I don't know if there's a different motion than what's in the book.
Okay, can we bring up the slide for Article Ten to make sure we... There you go, John, do you see it now?
Because, because the motions here are different than what's in the book, so...
Yeah, but it's not your fault, John. I appreciate you alerting to me, go ahead and read it.
Yep. Okay, uh, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to update the 2006 version, uh, and continue to build upon the recently completed hydraulic model recommendations for future long-term capital projects in water distribution and storage tanks, and all other incidental and related costs, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow such sums pursuant to General Law Chapter Forty-four, Subjections Seven or Eight, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore. And although these will be general obligation bonds of the town, it is anticipated that they will be repaid through the Water Enterprise Fund, and further that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. And the Finance Committee voted fifteen to nothing to recommend to town meeting, uh, as set forth in the proposed motion.
Can I get a second, please? Seconded by Cynthia Walsh, precinct two. All right, uh, the Municipal Operations Committee, uh, recommendation, I'll read it on page 12, they voted six to zero to recommend approval to town meeting. All right, um, on that, uh, I believe Dr. Grimm, town manager, you'd like to make a little presentation on this?
Yeah, very, very brief on this. As you see, our last master plan was done 14 years ago. Uh, as I expressed, we are townwide working on creating, uh, formal capital plans, and part of doing that is having master plans in place that a current technology changes, needs change, develop, areas get developed, and this is part of making sure that our sys, the system is upgraded appropriately, just like we do with our facilities master plan. Um, so again, we have a 14-year-old plan, and this is really an effort to go out, to borrow, to be able to upgrade that master plan, which we would do anyway for that individual department, but it also will be helpful as we put together a large-scale capital budget and we look out on the next five-year projection. Uh, I believe Phil McNulty is on, um, if there are any questions that are specific. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. Okay, uh, first up is David Laurie. David, when you're, uh, when you're able to speak, please unmute yourself and state your precinct number.
They didn't unmute me from the last vote, but...
You're all set now, okay, good. Precinct number, Dave?
Precinct six, David Laurie, there's nothing, I'm all set.
Oh, you're all set, okay, thank you. Uh, Peter Banus? Peter, Mr. Banus, when you, when you brought in to speak, uh, unmute yourself and just state your name and precinct number, please. Christine, does Peter still want to speak, or... We're not sure if Mr. Banus is gonna speak or not, just give him another couple of seconds.
I'm all set, I'm all set, sorry, I hit the wrong button.
That's okay, Peter. All right, I think we're ready to vote. Okay, Mr. Jito, we just saw that you have a question. Lou Jito, please, when you, when you brought in, please, uh, state your name and precinct number. You need to unmute yourself, Mr. Jito? Okay, Mr. Jito, name and precinct number, please? Uh, Mr. Jito, we're not hearing you, I don't know if your microphone's up? Uh, we don't, I, we don't know what device you're using, but if it's, uh, it's a laptop, there might be a, uh, on the bottom of your screen, or a button to, to turn on your microphone.
This is just a, a note of support from tech team. Lou, if you try testing your microphone, so if you click on the arrow, um, right next to the little microphone and try testing your speakers and microphone, that might jumpstart your microphone, because we could hear you earlier when you tested it out. Try doing that.
Okay, we can come back to Mr. Jito, just if we can just keep him where he is and see if he can... Mr. Jito, if you think you figure out your microphone, just, you know, mention to the moderator that you're, you're ready to talk. Uh, Cynthia Walsh, precinct two, please?
I'm coming, Mr. Laurie.
Cynthia wants me to tell everybody, she's just getting ready for this now, she just needs a moment.
I'm sorry.
Cynthia, you should be all set to talk.
Yes, thanks to, uh, Madam Chair. I move the question.
Okay, you just, yeah, okay, the move is seconded by Christine Howe. Can I just have your precinct number, Cynthia, for the record?
Two.
Two, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to give Mr. Jito a chance to get in, if he can. Okay, I don't see him be able to talk. All right, uh, moving the question means cut off debate. I have two people, Mr. Jito and another one, that would like to, if they could talk, but that's cuts off debate, just want to let everybody know, there's two people in line. All right, we're gonna, uh, um, vote by raising hand, so can we clear the raised hands? And let me know when the hands are, uh, cleared. They're all set. All those in favor are cutting off debate. Please raise your hand now. Ten seconds. Okay, if I could get a count, please? Okay, and can we clear the hands? Let me know when the hands are cleared. Good, okay, all those who vote no, please raise your hand now. Ten seconds. Okay, if I could get a count, please? Eight. And we're looking for the person on the, one more. Oh, I'm sorry, yep, thank you for reminding me. Okay, the total raised hands for yeses is 113, no's were eight. Motion to cut off, cut off debate, passes. Okay, now we're going back to the article, Article Ten. Can we get the poll up on Article Ten, please? And this requires a two-thirds vote, as you can see right on your screen, two-thirds vote. Okay, as you see, the poll is in front of you on the screen, please vote now for Article Ten, the Water Master Plan. Ten seconds. All right, can we close the poll and reveal the results? All right, uh, for Article Ten, yes is 122 plus one, 123, no, six, two abstentions. Motion passes. Thank you all for voting. Okay, we're gonna move right on, Article Eleven, that's on page 12. Uh, just one minute, please. Just for, I just want to provide clarification, Article Ten passes by two-thirds vote. 123, six, no, two abstain, one, it's a two-thirds vote. All right, we're on Article Eleven, that's on your page 12 of your warrant books, please. Article Eleven, Peter Reading System Upgrades, and you just look at my list here. I believe, uh, since there's no positive motion by FinCom, uh, Christine Howe, could you make that motion, please? Let you.
All right, I make a motion that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2 million to complete the townwide fixed network meter reading project to 100%, which project has successfully captured lost revenue from commercial users with old, slow, and outdated meters by continuing such project for residential users, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow such sums pursuant to General Law Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven or Eight, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore. And although these will be general obligation bonds of the town, it is anticipated that they will be repaid through the Water Enterprise Fund, and further that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Mr. Moderator, did you, uh, open me up here? I think he's muted.
Well, this is... You're right, John, I, I was muted, I apologize.
Yeah, um, yeah, so on the Finance Committee for this one, the Finance Committee voted fifteen to nothing to take no action on this article and recommend to town meeting this article be moved to the 2021 annual town meeting. And there were two basic reasons for it, and I'd like to give them.
Go ahead, Mr. Anzavino.
The, the first reasoning was, this is not an emergency-type thing, it's a $2 million estimated cost. And with, with the situation we're in today, with everything that's going on, we felt it would be more appropriate to push this off until the annual, and let's see what type of condition we're in financially and everything by the time this comes around next April or May. The second was, when the commercial one went through, and with an expected, uh, payback time and so forth, when this was brought to the Finance Committee, the question was asked, how would we, how did we do on the commercial? And they said, yeah, we're, we've made the ti, you know, the targets we had, we see the results and so forth. And we asked if they could give us that information on where were we before the meters? Where are we now? And we were told they couldn't get that. And we were told they couldn't get that information. So I don't know how you could give a, a statement that, yeah, you seem to be on target and you're making the money back that you expected. If you can't give us-
This is a quick summary, though. Quick summary of the report. You know.
Well, I mean, that was, that was the point that was brought up. Those were the two main points on why they voted 15 to nothing to push, then it should be pushed off until the annual.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, uh, let me, on, on page 13, the Municipal Operations Committee voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the town meeting. All right, um, presentation. Dr. Grimm, did you want to lead us off here?
Yep, very quickly, and again, Phil McNulty is on for the details. Uh, when we had proposed this originally back in February, uh, when we were still meeting in person, uh, or we were just real, excuse me, when we first started talking about this for the original town meeting, we had some numbers in for the commercial, but what had happened was with COVID shutting down, commercial operations shut down, and our numbers were actually a little bit lower than what we thought they may ultimately be. Uh, and even then, we had started to see some savings. I believe we have already, uh, uh, realized a few hundred thousand dollars in revenue, and I will defer to Phil on that. But this project basically is to upgrade the residential meters. Our commercial meters, meters have been upgraded. Our residential meters are outdated. They do not record accurately. Um, and the accuracy, the inaccuracies are to our disadvantage. So it's not that people are being overbilled. We're typically underbilling with these inaccuracies, and this will help us recover that. The other important fact to note with this is that we cannot, um, implore, employ our Munis modules with the old technology on the old meters. And we were trying to get to where we have one platform for software, and we cannot implement the Munis platform until we upgrade the meters because the systems don't read each other. So that means that from a public usage standpoint, when people try to get a water bill that are on the old system, we can't just pull that up with their other tax bills, for example. It requires a whole separate operation. So A, we would be able to better utilize our software platform and get rid of other platforms. And B, we are realizing revenue, and I would defer to Phil because he may have some, uh, pretty concrete numbers on that. And the other reason why, I, I do understand the desire to wait, but again, this comes out of the water fund. And right now, interest rates are particularly low, so if we are, if we know we're ultimately going to do this, um, I think, given that this is coming out of our, um, uh, water account, and, and that is not in bad shape, I, it makes perfect sense to me to borrow at this point while we see interest rates at a particularly abnormal low. Um, and again, I would, I would, uh, ask that any questions go to, uh, Phil McNulty. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, first, first person asking a question is Peggy Seawick. Peggy, um, when you're able to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please. Can you unmute yourself, Peggy? Okay, I'm gonna move on. We can come back to Peggy. Uh, Judge.
I didn't have a question. I didn't have a question.
Do I have a question?
No.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. We'll move on then. Uh, George Stolinski, when you, uh, able to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Stolinski, precinct two. Uh, a couple of quick questions. First off, how many meters are we talking about for the $2 million?
I, I can answer that if I'm on. This is Phil McNulty.
You are. Mr. McNulty, you're on. Go ahead, please.
We're talking about, uh, about 6,500 at this point.
Okay, then if we're talking about an expenditure of, uh, $2 million in this article, why is it on page 113 in our orange book here that it says it's 2.6 million for the total installation? Are we being not told everything, or should this article be, uh, 2.6 million rather than 2 million? That's, uh, my question.
Sure. Through the moderator, I can answer that. Uh, there were, back in 2000s, uh, back in 2017, there were two options considered, uh, 2.6 to do the entire town, which included the residential and the commercials. And we, you know, the, the, everybody elected to say, well, let's just tackle the commercials at 600,000. Let's see how that goes on, which we got to return on, on investment. Um, the return on, that project was completed, the commercial. And the, where, since 2017, our revenue is up, uh, 2.4 million per year. So there is no question, this, this, you know, this experiment has worked successfully. My opinion, there's no reason not to go forward. The, a, a delay in the project is delaying, a delay in capturing, uh, lost revenue.
Hey, with the, uh, cost of, uh, $2 million based on the numbers in the book and 600, 6,500, uh, meters, we're talking about a cost of $307 and change, I believe, a meter. Uh, what would be our recoup rate, uh, or dollar amount that we would recoup by putting in a $307 meter into somebody's home? Approximately?
Um, the return on investment for the full 2.6 million dollar project was, was three years. And the commercial meters alone was one year. So if we're just tackling the residential meters, it would be back to around a three, three-year, um, timeframe. So maybe slightly more, but, um, the, the, the results we've gotten so far have been far exceeded expectations. So it could be lower, but, uh, no promises there.
I, I think to also answer that question, it's hard to know per meter how much we would recover because some meters may be working okay and others may be horribly dysfunctional. So it, it's a little bit of an anticipation situation. We just don't have a crystal ball on that, so we can average what we assume we would take three years to recover it or one year in the commercial case. But we do know that in the case of commercial, we did, we did see a, a significant revenue increase. And again, residential would be a little bit slower just because the percent of usage in residential is, is, is going to be a little bit lower per household. But the volume and the number of meters, um, should add up, but we may not know individually.
Now, I'm a little concerned that I'm paying an extra $307 for a meter to charge me more for my water and also paying the interest and my tax rate because of this expenditure. So I'm not 100% sure how I want to vote on this yet.
Well, we're not charging more for water. Let's just be clear, we're just charging what we should be charging. Uh, some people have been getting undercharged and possibly been getting a lot of free water. So, uh, I, Mr., with all due respect, Mr. Stolinski, we're not, we're not raising your water rates. I just want to be clear on that.
They were lower at 5% last year, so.
All right, thank you.
If I, if I could cite a few other benefits is the, uh, the direct reading capabilities that the system would have would allow us not to have to go out for four to six weeks each quarter with two vehicles and two personnel to go out and get those drive-by readings. They would, they would actually come directly into the office. And we build quarterly. We would then have the ability, once this is installed, to build monthly or whatever's chosen. You could build more frequently if you wanted to, with a, basically a push of a button. And also the ability to, to detect leaks. Uh, we would get alarms and, and criticals notices that if, um, someone were away or just didn't notice they had unusually high usage, we would detect that on day one, two, or three rather than day 103. And then have to deal with the, uh, you know, the high bill and the abatement issues that go along with that, so. There's, there's a lot of benefits other than just the monetary, you know, return on investment.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNulty. Mr. George Stolinski, we're gonna move on. Thank you very much for your questions and comments, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up is Denise Bronson. Denise, when you're, go ahead, state your name and precinct number, please.
Denise Bronston, precinct eight. I'd like to know if these are smart meters, which are very, um, dangerous to the families inside, giving off radiation. And, um, they're also a fire hazard.
They, they are not smart meters, no. I know that, that, that was an option and what we originally considered, considered this and, um, you know, you can get that information on your phone, but we're able to track, uh, water usage, uh, literally minute by minute, hour to hour, day to day, week to week. It's not, let's see, you know, let's see what the meter reading is every three months, how it is now. We can, we can track it, and as I said, graph it, and, uh, and, you know, our role would change from being, you know, reactive to being proactive. You know, finding those criticals and seeing, seeing what's going on, um, in the field and, and, and trying to, trying to get to problems before they, to make, keep them as little problems rather than, uh, mount to big problems.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Denise? Thank you. Uh, next up is Patricia Colburn. Can you come in? Pat, can you please state your name and precinct number, please?
Pat Colburn, precinct four. Um, my first question, thank you, Mr. Moderator, is will you have to enter people's homes in order to replace these meters? Because during COVID, that might not be such a good idea. And if you do have to do that, how will you, um, handle compliance?
This is Phil again. I'll answer that. Um, yes, well, we'll have to wait and see on that, but the answer is yes, we do have to. Um, what we do is we, we schedule out areas and attack roads, um, you know, one by one and knock them off. And it's a long, arduous process. It is a lot of phone calls, notices, and so forth. And then there's the ones that you can only get to people on Saturdays, for example, but you, you get the whole, low-hanging fruit and get as many of the easier ones that you can get. And then, and then, you know, it, it is a struggle getting into, you know, coordinating time to get into people's houses. With regard to COVID, it's just like anything else. Let's wait and see. And hopefully by the time, if and when this project gets approved, uh, we'll, we'll just have to, uh, we could put it, is, is a little while before this has to go out to bid and so forth. So there is some lead time before we actually do any physical installation, so. Hopefully, you know, we're, we're free and clear by the time this project gets approved.
And, and, you know, I know we're trying, we would try to block it out by roadway and coordinate it, um, so that it logistically makes sense. But I would imagine if we have people that are particularly concerned about someone coming into their home, we could work around that a bit.
Thank you. Um, my second question, my last question is, I, I understand that you can't give, um, an idea of how much, um, people's bills can jump, but I'm wondering if there is, first of all, any plan in place should somebody's bill dramatically increase um, to help them with that at least adjustment period? And then the other part of that question is, I'm assuming you won't go after people, um, for past unbilled water? I just want to verify that that's the case.
Um, not a lawyer here, but don't play one on TV, but, no, uh, there's no, there's no looking back. We're moving forward here. Um, so with regard to your first question about high billing, most of this is all about preventing high billing because we only get a look at your bills once every three months, if you will. So if there was a high, you know, a problem, you had a leak in your, your basement bathroom that you haven't been there in three months, or, you know, the spigot in the back was leaking, that would continue for months and months, uh, before we actually, the, the homeowner saw it, and we saw the bill, and we saw the bill. And then it's, you know, everybody's, everybody's upset that we lost water and you have a high bill. This, this system will alert us to, you know, if, if your regular usage is, let's say, 300 gallons a day, all of a sudden it jumps up to $2,000 and you're in Flori, um, 2,000 gallons and you're in Florida. We'll see that. And we'll, we'll be able to capture that, uh, that problem right away rather than have it linger, you know, until you see the water bill, water sewer bill.
Thank you, and I'll just comment again that, um, it would be nice if someone could start thinking. I understand the whole point is to capture the revenue, um, for the meters that aren't, um, tracking accurately, but someone could just give a little thought to if somebody's bill does jump dramatically um, because they've been underreporting. Um, it would just be nice to be able to help them out or give them a, um, a little bit of time to get used to it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pat. All right, next up is David Laurie. Dave, when you come in, please state your name and precinct number.
You, David Laurie, precinct six. And, uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, um, to the water department, anybody who could answer is, um, I don't think what we're talking about on the protecting homeowners from leaky basement plumbing that, that abatements come through, you know, anywhere near 1% of the population. I mean, when I see these meetings, I think we see a handful of people coming through for abatements. But, you know, if we're talking about a fraction of 1%, I don't think you're here advocating, you know, uh, advocating for us to spend $2 million to solve for such a small number of people that have that problem. Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, it seems like a hefty investment to try to protect us from that. Um, but before I, uh, let you answer that, I also want to, I'll comment. You mentioned that we got a 5% drop on our water, but that came at the, uh, uh, at the expense of an increase on the sewer side. So it's not like water and sewer, who, which often work hand in hand, has not been, uh, so, uh, so much discounted as just being a shift between water and sewer. If you could help me on that question.
Mr. McNulty, can you answer those?
Yeah, with regard to the high billing, I was just answering the question. That, that's not really the major benefit of this. That's just, uh, you know, we get anywhere between, let's say, 16 and 30, um, abatements each quarter, and we deal with those, uh, but that's just part of, that's part of the process. Those essentially get reduced almost to nothing over time with this, so that, that is a benefit. The two major benefits is the direct reading and the labor that it saves from driving around and getting those reads. And as Dr. Grimm said, the, the, uh, the compatibility with Munis is very cumbersome to get a clean database and convert that to billing. So that becomes a lot smoother. The other major benefit is, um, it, it, the major benefit is capturing the lost revenue. Old meters, eight to 10, 12, 15, sometimes 30 years old, they read slow. And that's lost revenue. It's as simple as that.
Yeah, thank you. I, that's a perfect launching point for another question I have to you, uh, Mr. Moderator, to anybody on the select board. The, if the primary purpose of this is to raise the amount of money people end up spending as an accurate reading of their water, and we've been spending at the, at the rates we're on for water today, based on inefficiency, what are we getting for a discount on our water cost after this is voted in eventually, whether it's voted now or in the spring when it really should be voted? But whenever this is voted, how are we looking to capture this increased revenue that, uh, that Phil McNulty referred to to increase our, our operating budget? Uh, what are we doing with, uh, this added revenue? Um, I would think that, that a, a sharp discount on the cost of water since we're not using water as some kind of a profit center for the town to try to solve for revenue, uh, issues.
Do you want me to respond?
Select here, Christine Howe, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Larry. The board did not discuss the water rates in relation to this project, but it's definitely something we can consider. Obviously, there are other projects and things that we fund through the water department and sewer department. Um, and I think we would definitely look at that in the future if there is such a high return on investment. Um, we've voted in the last few years to, I believe, increase the water rates. So obviously, if there's a savings and we can, you know, lower that, then we certainly will. But we always sort of look at the budget and have those hearings, uh, as presented with the information from the town accountant and the town manager. Um, and obviously, our, our debt service is impacted as well by this because we borrow against the Water Enterprise account. So, uh, we would look at, um, what we can pay down or not on that as well. So, um, I think it would definitely be considered by the board. We didn't talk about it in the context of this article. We primarily wanted to address this now, and we did bring it up at several meetings leading into the special town meeting, but ultimately decided to keep it on the warrant, I believe, because the cost savings that are anticipated and the idea of addressing it sooner than later, especially with potential construction costs constantly increasing as you wait more and more seasons. Um, so from what we heard from staff, the water department, town manager, and town accountant, that's why we're pushing for it now, and, um, I think certainly we can look at water rates when that comes up. I know, uh, Selectman KB is also indicating he would like to respond to that question if we can move him into the panel to do so.
Are you able to hear me? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Laurie, I think that that's, that's really an excellent point. Uh, and this is something that we, we should probably, uh, also bring Bill Rowe in potentially to help us answer definitively here. The, uh, uh, the water rates are ultimately sort of more or less set to break even. So the expenses of the water department, uh, are covered. There's, there's not profit really being made to town with regard to the, the, the water, um, rates. Uh, I'd like to have that confirmed by, by the accountant just to make sure I'm not giving you misinformation. Uh, to that, to the, if, to the extent that that's true, uh, then yes, we would expect that a more efficient system that a more efficient system, uh, would ultimately cost everybody less. Uh, and I think that, that would be, uh, there's, there wouldn't be a number that we could give and say we're, we are anticipating a 5% decrease or something like that. It really would require a little bit more, uh, forethought and, uh, sort of pro forma, uh, examination of, of, of the, the costs and of operation, but also the, the revenue that we expect to come, bring in. Uh, but, but that was, uh, you, we, I think we naturally see a, a decrease in those rates, uh, just, just by the, the, uh, the influence it would have on our ability to capture revenue. Additionally, uh, I think we, we're going to see, uh, a lot of other, uh, benefits in our, in our, to our revenue, uh, based on this as well. As many people know, and it has been mentioned, this is, uh, the system is, um, uh, not trackable in Munis. Uh, there's a couple of, uh, caveats to that or, or things to consider. One is that, that, uh, because it's not tracked in Munis, it means it's being tracked someplace else, but all of the rest of our, of our accounting is tracked in Munis. So it essentially has to be, uh, tracked, uh, manually in, in another system and also in, in Munis where, where I think, I believe it's being done manually, entered into that system. So we have a reconciliation between two separate, uh, accounting systems that it ties up our accounting department in a way that, that is really not efficient. Uh, it's, it's costly and, and, uh, time consuming, uh, and I think that that would benefit everybody as well. Additionally, I believe because it's on Munis, it would, it would be eligible to, uh, to have online billing, which is another problem that I think a lot of people face, uh, that would be, this would ultimately could benefit, uh, payers. With, with a, I know it's $2 million is a lot of money. I really can't contest that. Uh, I believe also that, and this is something that, that Mr. McNulty can, can help confirm or, uh, correct if I'm, if I'm wrong about this. But as I recall, the break even, uh, on this, the, the point at which it pays for itself is, uh, only a, a few years. I believe it was, I want to say two years, but it could have been, uh, uh, three or four, but, uh, just like to have that confirmed as well in a very short time. The longer we wait, uh, the more it's ultimately going to cost us. And as, as a member of the, the Water and Sewer Subcommittee, uh, I've been involved in a lot of these abatements. And I think the total number, dollar value of them is not gigantic. Uh, that is, is absolutely true. But the effect this has on many of the people who come to us for abatements is significant. Uh, this, this, you know, one I recall in particular, very, uh, I think is a good example, was a, a lady who, uh,
Mr. Kaby, I'd like to ask you just to stay focused on,
I will, I will.
fixed meter reading system upgrades.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I'll, I'll leave it at that, but, but I believe that this will have a strong effect on, on a, a revenues and will decrease the cost. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Kaby.
Moderator, I, I think I, I could make a final statement about this.
One, one final statement, Mr. Laurie.
Yeah, it's, it'll be right on, on point.
Sure, go right ahead.
It was about two years ago, uh, Mr. McNulty made the most incredible presentations to the Finance Committee. It was the best one I think I've ever seen in the three plus years I've been on it. And the, the beauty of the business, uh, meter decision was to give us a return of investment within one year. All of a sudden we got hit with COVID and now all of a sudden the numbers are being pushed way out. The object of that, uh, the, the sequence of going out with the business first was because they have such a large volume compared to residential. So we could get the biggest bang for the dollar by going to the commercial side first. And then we were going to get data to be able to help us make decisions on this very article now.
All right, Dave, Dave, you're gonna have to wrap it up.
No, no, but I, Bob, I want to, I want to wrap up by saying nobody in, in the response to any questions,
Ten seconds, Dave.
Nobody has made a, a comment that proves that there's any data to back up what the volume of, of benefit is on this, on this article. And we were supposed to have that by the time this article came to us. We should push this to autumn, I mean, to the annual town meeting because of that.
All right.
That's the point.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, very quickly, just to Ms. Colburn's question, just to Ms. Colburn's question, we offer payment plans for anybody who has trouble with the tax bill, provided they reach out to us prior to the due date.
Okay, let's move on because a lot of people waiting to speak. Uh, thank you all for your comments. John Lederhand?
John Lederhand, Precinct One. Um, my question about ROI was answered to the best of their ability. I know in my business, we did receive a back bill for a, a meter that was not functioning properly, $360,000 worth, and we had to pay it. So I think the town is being generous. Will there, another question is, will there be labor savings associated with not having to have people driving around town reading meters? And, um, thirdly, I'll just, I'll just get them all out. How long will the project take to complete? What's the projection on it? That's it.
I'll quickly, I'll quickly address the labor question. As Mr. McNulty said, less people will be out and about doing that, which frees them up to do other work. We also, anytime somebody retires, for example, we will look to see if those positions need to be filled or if there are other areas that we would need to amplify our staff, uh, or if a position does no longer needs to be filled, we might leave it vacant. Uh, but as we grow and as we do projects and as technology changes, the skill sets change and we would adapt accordingly.
All set, Mr. Lederhand?
Uh, yeah, how long to complete the project? What's the projection?
That one's for Phil.
This is Phil. That'd be about one year, not about, it'll probably be a 365 days contract.
And that's including COVID constraints?
Uh, tough one. I don't know. I can't say no. We, we'll just wait, we'll, we'll just have to wait till it's safe to go, you know, before we even start. But from, from, from the notice to proceed, it'd be one, one, 100, 365 days from that point.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lederhand. Uh, next up is Stanley Zoll. Mr. Zoll, when you are able to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Stanley Zoll, uh, Precinct Seven. Actually, uh, Pat Colburn, uh, handled my question already, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Okay, next up is Paul Demuse. Mr. Demuse, when you're brought in, uh, when you're able to unmute yourself, please, um, state your name and precinct number.
Paul Demuse, Precinct Three. Um, most of my questions have been answered already. The, the alert on a, uh, over-usage, would that be triggered by, uh, say a leaky toilet that leaks 200 gallons a day?
This is Phil. Uh, yes, that, that's actually the most common example, yes.
And is it true that 85% of the water use in town is commercial?
No. Um, that's, that's, it might be flipped, flipped around, but commercial is high for the number of meters involved, but it's, um, I don't, I don't have the, I don't actually have the flow at, at my fingertips. But I can give you the numbers of meters. The residentials are in the neighborhood of, let's say, 7,500 and the commercials are in the 500 area to give you some scale.
Okay.
But that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily mean the volume that's used, so.
Okay. And my question on the staffing reduction was answered, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demuse. Okay, let's move on. Uh, Mr. Steve Kaby, you're next on my list. I don't know if you still have any questions or statements. Mr. Kaby, Steve Kaby? Okay, I'm gonna move on.
Are you able to hear me? Sorry.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Kaby.
I was just, uh, I was just on mute. Uh, yeah, so the only thing I would like to add, uh, beyond what I've already described was really just to speak really quickly to the abatements. Uh, and as I mentioned, it's not a large dollar amount, uh, in the grand scheme of things. It, it's not small either. I think that it, that it's significant enough that it's something we should pay attention to. Uh, but, but the, the toll it takes on residents who have to, to, uh, uh, deal with these abatements, uh, is, is, it troubles me at times as, as we're working through this and working with people who, uh, are harmed financially and sometimes are not able to afford it, that where we will sometimes see, as an example I was going to give, was a lady who came a couple of years ago, a senior citizen in her 80s, who was taking care of her six-year-old daughter who had cancer. Uh, it was the two of them living alone in a house, uh, and, uh, they lived, the two of them lived off of, I believe, just the one lady's social security check, uh, and perhaps a small amount of additional money, but it was not much. And because of a leaky toilet, she received a bill in, in the hundreds, uh, $500, $600. And, um, the, in the grand scheme, that's not a huge amount. Uh, but if, if we can alert somebody earlier that they have a problem, uh, I, I think that's, that's something that, that, uh, we certainly should, should, uh, take seriously. But I think that the, the stronger financial and somewhat, uh, uh, you know, less personal, uh, consideration is, is that our system really is antiquated and, uh, and the people who are, uh, working the Water Department, for whom I have a gigantic amount of respect. Uh, they, they, they work hard, the men and women there, uh, do amazing work. A lot of their time is eaten up dealing with these kinds of issues. We have at least one person driving around all the streets in our town all the time, collecting these meter readings. And, um, it, it's not, just not a good use of their time. So we should have, we should have systems that, that can handle, uh, this data transfer for us. And, uh, and ultimately it's going to, we're all going to benefit from it. There's, there is, I can't think of anybody who's going to benefit by waiting for this. Uh, and with the interest rates low, uh, and, and the issues with COVID-19 and our ability to generate, generate revenue in 2021, 2022, uh, I would, I would advocate for people to consider this seriously.
Sixty seconds, Mr. Kaby.
I, I am done. I thank you very much. I just wanted to remind everybody that I am a, a, a town meeting representative in Precinct One and that's why I asked to speak. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is Mr. Lu Gido. Unmute yourself. Please state your name and precinct number. Mr. Gido, you're unmuted. Uh, Mr. Gido, if you can unmute yourself or the microphones aren't working for you, please call the help desk. It's 781-232-9248. That's 781-232-9248. They might be able to help you out. We're gonna move on. Uh, Tony Suzer? Tony, uh, Mr. Suzer, when you come in, please, uh, when you're unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Am I on?
Yes, you are, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, Anthony Suzer, Precinct Three. Uh, I have a couple of questions. One, I know exactly how water meters work, is they get older, get slower. But when I was in the Board of Selecting back 12 years ago or so, we had a program, the old meters were replaced every 10 years to avoid the issue we're talking about. Uh, have we been in that program? Mr. Mc, can Mr. McNulty answer that question?
Yes, this is Phil. I can answer what we've been doing. Uh, you know, given that there's 8,000 meters, that's, um, this is why we're out to bid on it. Uh, we need to go out to bid on it so we can bang it all in one year. We, we basically have, um, between one and a half to two men working in the meter, uh, division. Um, they can't part, if they do a certain amount per day, they can't possibly go through 8,000 meters, uh, in, in a 10-year period. So what we do now is we, if there is new development, we put in the compatible meters now, so that's not wasted. You know, we don't have to redo it as part of this project. We're doing that. Any opportunity we get in to change, if there's a service break, we'll, we'll go in and change them. Any excuse we can change a meter, we do, just so that we can take one less meter off this project. And, you know, if there's a new development like Taj or the, the projects on Monk Street Quarter, all these meters go in there. So any new development, we're, we're taken care of on our own, but we can't tackle, you know, some 7,000 meters.
I, I understand that, but at any time do we have been to the program, we're not doing on a rotating basis. We cannot do 8,000 meters in a year. I understand that completely, but have we been doing or do we have been to the program?
Yeah, uh, we're putting in the, um, Munis compatible meters in the, uh, also the fixed network system meters as we, to the extent we're able to, yeah. So I, I don't know if that answers your question entirely.
Not exactly, because you didn't, you didn't tell me if we still on a rotating basis, we're replacing old meters with new ones.
Yes, we are, absolutely.
As you said earlier, that we got meters as old as 30 years old. Why hasn't, these meters have been replaced?
Yep. Um, yes, that's, that's, that's where our effort has been for the last couple of years since we got this network in and these compatible Munis and direct read type systems. Uh, we're going through daily, you know, that's, that's what the office admin staff does. They contact the residents, they start with the oldest meters and, and tackle those first. Yes, absolutely, we are doing that.
Okay, the other thing I would like to make you explain to me, are we success, successful captured lost revenue?
Yes.
With a new system, with the commercial meters? We could not rebuild people for what it has been paid for already. How do we recop, recapture?
Oh.
Lost revenue?
Future, future lost revenue. Uh, uh, in other words, a continued slow meter continues to lose revenue. Yes.
Future, but not, not, not what it says here.
No, nothing's retroactive here, no.
Gido, just hang, hang on, everybody. Mr. Gido, just, just be with us for a minute, Mr. Gido? Thank you. Go ahead, uh, Mr. McNulty.
No, the idea says lost, we recaptured lost revenue. I could see going through, going forward, but going back, we didn't recover any lost revenue.
No, no.
I think that's a false statement on the article.
No, it's just semantic.
Gentlemen, uh, no cross debate. I mean, I, I don't want to slow things down by going to the moderator, but, you know,
I'm sorry.
Why don't we ask the question, Mr. Suzer, and then Mr. McNulty can answer it back and forth, you know, one question at a time.
Okay.
Mr. Suzer, what's your question? And that's final question.
My question was, going, going forward, I could see recouping some of the money we have lost in the past, but we cannot, as is stated on the book, we captured lost revenue. How is that possible? That's the answer I'm looking for. That's simple.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you, uh, that's not the intent of the language, is to capture future lost revenue. Not, we're not,
It's not possible. Thank you.
We're not billing people retroactively for, you know, last year, two years, three years ago.
All right, thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Suzer.
Can I make one quick statement, Mr. Moderator?
Very quickly, sir.
Okay, my last statement, I could not support this article at this point, even though it's some good to it, when very difficult times, at $2 million, it's going to be poured in the back of taxpayers of the town. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Move on. That's, we have, still have a lot of people who have some questions here. Thank you, Mr. Suzer. Uh, Joseph Scardino, please. When you get a chance to unmute yourself.
It will present some meters. It is necessary.
I'm sorry, Lou Gido, I'm sorry. Mr. Gido, you're next up. If you're gonna mute yourself, there you go, Mr. Gido. Name and precinct number.
Lou Gido, Precinct Four.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Success.
Yes. Congratulations.
I, quite frankly, I think most of the questions I had have been answered, but I would just recommend that we, we take advantage of the time that we're in now in terms of having low interest rates and doing things. I see no reason not to move ahead with this. If we think about waiting for a half a year to, to then float a bond versus doing it now and being able to recoup, uh, money faster and also to be able to stop the need for people driving around to collect information, which then has to be coded in manually to a system, we're wasting a lot of money at a time when we're looking to save money. It seems patently clear to me that we ought to be moving ahead and supporting this article. That's all I have to say.
Next up is Joseph Scardino. Next up is Joseph Scardino. Mr. Scardino, when you unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
There we go. Mr. Moderator, Joe Scardino, precinct one.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Um, first of all, many speakers have talked about interest rates. Chairman Powell of the Federal Reserve has come out many occasions in the last month talking about the long-term projection of interest rates, and he expects them to remain extremely low for the next two years. And I have seen no other commentators from the financial world that talk about, uh, interest rates going up anytime in the near future. Number two is, um, with a possible change of administrations, um, we have a chance of getting substantial federal stimulus money for infrastructure projects, uh, which this may very well qualify. In the past, when we've had sewer projects, we've talked about getting grants. Uh, I didn't hear Mr. McNulty talk about any other sources other than borrowing. Uh, but there's also, as I said, a great chance, they've talked about infrastructure stimulus. Um, other speakers have talked about the COVID risk of entering the houses. Um, we've also had a very, uh, dry summer and fall that may affect the amount of water we're gonna be, uh, available to us next year. All of these points point up to the fact we should not rush this project to the altar. In addition to the fact that many speakers have indicated that we have got less than complete information, I agree with the finance committee. I think that, uh, this should be postponed for the swing town meeting.
Okay, Mr. Scardino. How about at the end? Okay. Okay, I just want to move on. Uh, next up is Robert. All I need to have you state your name, last, first name, last name, and precinct number, please. Robert?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Is that Mr. Cohen?
Yes, it's me. Uh, my name is Robert Cohen, I'm from precinct five.
All right, go ahead, sir.
This all got started down in, no, uh, Phil can correct me, down at Greenbrook Two, when they were suing us in Greenbrook One.
Mr. Cohen, I need you to stay focused on.
I understand that, this is where this started. And this is when the meters came in. We settled that with two, uh, with two. Everything you heard about this system is great. When you have a leak, even on your, uh, outside street, uh, water spigot there, it costs money. Uh, the toilet is a major, major problem. A lot of people just pay the bill and don't do anything about it. This is a great system. We already have the computer, which was a lot of money to start with. The putting these things in, yeah, that's gonna continue, but you can see the cost of this going up over and over again. So the time we get to do this, this will be triple the price and pound fool, just pound foolish just to keep waiting. We go ahead in some areas and we go backwards in this one. And this is the area we're going backwards on. Uh, everything they said, Phil is, is the guy that does this and his act, his records are accurate. But the thing is here, is keep pulling up procrastinating, procrastinating, and procrastinating costs the taxpayers of this town a lot of money. And go back five, six years and find out how much. That's all I have to say, Mr. Moderator. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Uh, Mr. Banus, Peter Banus is up next. Mr. Banus, when you, uh, can unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number. Not sure if you raised your hand by mistake, but just let us know. Peter Banus, a couple more seconds.
That was, that was a mistake, sorry.
That's okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Johnny Zavino, you're next on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Johnny Zavino, precinct four. A couple of quick questions, please. Uh, through you to Mr. Mc, Mr. McNulty. You mentioned that, um, you wouldn't have to have the people driving around to do the automatic meter reading. So how is the information from the meter transmitted to the town? That's, that's my first question, if you could answer that.
Okay, I'm, I'm on. This is through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, it's transmitted, the infrastructure from the first project is already in place. All the meters, repeaters, and gateways allows those meters to transmit from antenna to gateways to the office computer here. Uh, you can just call it up and see what the meter's doing. Um, so the, both the infrastructure, physicals, infrastructure and the software is already in place from the first part of the project.
All right, so the, so the individual meter is, this is a, a radio signal that's going out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the second question is, how many meters have you already installed? Cause you said you've already been doing it. So if there were whatever, sixty-five or seventy-five hundred, uh, meters, how many have you already done that would not be considered now in this project?
It's, it's, Mr. Moderator, through you, uh, it's less than a thousand.
Okay, all right.
I'd have to say five, six hundred in that area, but.
All right, just curious. Um, how long, how long do these meters last? How long are they good for?
It, Mr. Moderator, through you, uh, the, the rule of thumb in, in the water industry is you, you try to replace them every ten years.
All right, but you just told us you couldn't do that, so. But, all right, so ten years, so if we, if we do this over the course of a year, they'll all be coming up to again at one time, but. And then the, my, my last question, uh, Mr. Moderator, through you, would be to the town accountant. The, the statement was made that, uh, in the way the motion is, is that it will be a general bond, but it'll be paid for anticipated from the, uh, Water Enterprise Fund. And is the Water Enterprise Fund, uh, substantial enough to take the obligation of this two million dollar loan?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Rowe?
Bill Rowe, town accountant. Um, I believe so. We're going to, um, we, we still have, for the first few years, we still haven't anticipated four million dollars to be collected from the, um, from the TIF money, that it's gonna expire in, in, uh, twenty twenty-five. There is a drop-off in debt service from twenty-three to twenty-four of about eight hundred thousand dollars because we're paying off, um, uh, two big notes are maturing in twenty twenty-three. So, I mean, I mean, you're talking, it's a ten-year note, so it's an extra two hundred thousand per year, so I don't think it would have any great impact on the Water Enterprise operating budget.
All right, through you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Um, and my last statement is, is what I stated, is the finance chair. I, I don't think this article needs to be pushed at this point in time. I think it can wait. Uh, we've been told they don't even know when they'd be able to start it under the conditions they're in. Waiting five or six months before this would come back? I don't think it really gonna delay this project at all if it's, if, if you wait until we see where we are financially come next May. Um, I, I think we can afford to push this off until next May. I don't think you're gonna lose any time in doing this project, um, because by the time you can start it with this whole thing going. Um, and again, I, I think we should be able to get the financials of what happened with the first part of it presented before, other than just saying we've recouped it, we should be able to see the data, and we have not had that yet. Thank you for your time, Mr. Moderator, and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anzavino. Moving on, uh, Elliot Hanson. Remember, everybody has three minutes. Speakers, make a statement or question, ask questions. Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Hanson. When you're able to unmute yourself, state your name and precinct number, please. All right, we're gonna move on right now. Uh, Eric, uh, one second, please. Okay, Elliot Hanson, please just, uh, you're unmuted, please talk. Make a statement or ask a question if you can. Give you five more seconds to try to make some communication to us, please. Okay, I'm gonna have to move on, Mr. Hanson. We'll try to come back to you. Next up is Eric Coleman. Eric, when you are able to, uh, mute yourself, please, uh, state your name and precinct number.
I put my hand down.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on. Cynthia Walsh? When you're able to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please. Uh, Cynthia Walsh, we'll give you a couple more. She's telling me to wait a second. Couple of seconds, Cynthia, Ms. Walsh.
I didn't need the seconds.
Okay, I know, you're very, you're good at this. Go ahead, name and, name and precinct.
I'm blaming the machine. Um, Cynthia Walsh, precinct two, I move the previous question.
Okay, there's been, uh, seconded. By Christine House, seconded. Uh, okay, moving the question means a cutoff debate. I just want to let everybody know, we have at least ten, is it? Twelve people in line to still speak, but this will effectively cut off the bait. Uh, what we're gonna do is, it needs a two-thirds vote, we're gonna, uh, clear the raised hands and set up the voting process through the raised hands. This is just a cutoff debate. All right, once I'm told the raised hands are clear, we'll, we'll proceed. Just, just a minute or so. Please stop, uh, moving. I need you, everybody, just, uh, don't raise your hands just yet. Let them lower your hands, and then we can get through this as quick as possible. Okay, ready to go. All those who want to cut off the bait and vote yes, raise your hand now. Okay, can I get a count of raised hands? Okay, can we clear the hands? And please let me know when the hands are cleared. Now, okay, all those will vote no, please raise your hand now. Ten seconds. Okay, if I could get a count, please. Twelve. All right, the vote is yes, one oh eight, twelve, no. Motion passes the cutoff debate. Now we're gonna proceed right to the, the article. This is Article eleven, fixed meter reading system. I will allow Christine Howe, select chair, if you wanna make a couple of comment on that grant issue you want to talk about.
Sure. So, yes, just to conclude, um, the board had thought about this article quite in depth and over its last several meetings, over the last month and a half, when we ultimately chose to bring this to town meeting. As, uh, the water superintendent, the town manager, and the town accountant indicated, um, the longer we wait to do these types of projects, the more expensive it becomes. In terms of grants that are available, there's two major public works grants out there for these types of projects, mass works grants and public works, um, economic development assistance grants at the federal level, both of which we've applied for, for our Park Street Sewer Project, um, which we're pretty confident in receiving those. So I'm not sure that the town would be looking for a specific grant for this project, but obviously if there's funding out there, we'll pursue it, and that will just come off of the cost of this. Um, it's gonna have savings for the town staff hours. Ultimately, we'll recoup the funding, um, that we're not capturing right now through the water system. Um, so from an operations and a financial standpoint, I think it's a very sound project that should move forward. In addition, we did have Bill do a, Mr. Rowe do a projection of the debt service, and we'll actually have, um, an increase in our, or not an increase, but, um, an overage in our water account if we use the borrowing that he's projected out, so, um, it won't negatively impact the debt service, um, in an unaffordable way. So I'm not sure if Dr. Grimm or Phil McNulty have anything further to add, but I encourage you to vote for this now in order to take advantage of a lot of the, um, low interest rates in our ability to do this project, um, on the timeline that Phil's described.
I'm muted. Uh, Dr. Grimm, did you want to add anything quickly? No, okay, let's proceed to the vote. It is a two-thirds vote. Yes. I gotta ask, uh, town council, there was a question regarding, um, regarding cutting off the bait, what amount of vote is needed? I'm gonna have town council just explain that rule to everybody.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Essentially, under town meeting time, any, um, action to cut off debate requires a two-thirds vote, and the motion to move the question does cut off debate and requires a two-thirds
Thank you, Madam Town Council. Okay, we're gonna proceed. This is for Article eleven, fixed meter reading system upgrades, residential meters. The poll is before you. Please start voting now. This is fixed meeting, we, fixed meeting meter reading system upgrades for residential meters. Yes, no, abstain. All right, can we end the poll? And can we see the results? As the screen says, two-thirds was needed. Yes, sixty-five. No, sixty plus one. And abstain, four. You agree, motion fails. Motion does not pass, motion has failed. Again, sixty-five yes, sixty-one no, abstentions four. All right, let's move on. Uh, in the warrant, uh, Article twelve and thirteen were dismissed on Monday night, October nineteenth. I will move into Article fourteen, page thirteen in your warrant books, please. Okay, and I asked, uh, Chair of the Planning Board, Joseph Scardino, he's scheduled to read the motion.
Mr. Moderator, Joe Scardino, chairman of the planning board.
Yes, sir.
That the town vote to approve Article fourteen is printed in the warrants.
Is there a second? Uh, there's been, um, the motions are made and seconded by Gene Fleming. Mr. Scardino, just for clarification to the moderator, is there an amended motion or substitute motion going on here?
Yes, there is, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, are you gonna, okay, do you want us to vote on the first?
Uh.
I just want clarification on what we're doing this tonight.
That the, um, main motion should be discussed so that people can appreciate what, what the substitute motion does.
Okay, okay, so the motions are made and seconded. Just one second, I wanna get, can I get clarification from the town council, if you
Um, Mr. Moderator, through you. Um, the concern that I have, just to be clear, is that there cannot be a vote on this main motion as it currently exists. So either the motion should be amended to be consistent with what's on the screen, um, and then certainly we can talk about the entire bylaw and the changes that are being proposed.
Um, Ms. Goldberg, um, my, my view on that is that, uh, uh, it's a very simple change. I think the town meeting must understand there'll be a presentation by the town planner, and it became patently obvious and much more comprehensible by town meeting if the amendment is heard and then voted afterwards. In other words, we wouldn't be voting until after the presentation of the primary motion and then a discussion of the substitute motion and then a vote. I don't see where that's contradictory to what you're talking about.
Just one moment. I have to listen to town council. One more clarification for town council?
Yeah. Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I wasn't, um, disagreeing with Mr. Scardino that, um, these changes shouldn't be discussed and understood. My suggestion was that the proposed amendment, which is, was written up as a substitute motion, be made by the planning board, and so that would put before the body the original vo, um, the, or the original bylaw voted by the planning board with the changes voted by the planning board. Um, as long as, uh, you, you make clear that you won't allow the question to be moved without first, uh, recognizing someone for the amended motion, then it seems like the, the, um, the order doesn't necessarily matter. the order doesn't necessarily matter. But that's up to you, Mr. Moderator.
Alright, let's proceed right now. Let me first read the municipal regulations recommendation. It's in the book on page 26. Municipal regs voted five to zero to recommend a town meeting. So for clarification from town council, we can proceed as is. Let's do that. And Mr. Scardino, who's gonna make the presentation?
Mr. Charbonneau, the town planner.
Okay, is he available?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, Mr. Yes, we do. Go ahead, sir.
If you could pull up the PowerPoint that I sent so I could start the presentation, that would be great.
Yeah, just give us a moment.
Yes.
There you go.
Great, thank you.
Proceed, please.
Yes, alright, so. Whoa, whoa, okay. Can we go down to the second slide, please? Okay, thank you. Quick background on this article. These amendments were going to be presented at the prior town meeting, however, with the situation with COVID, this got tabled until this town meeting due to the condensing of the previous warrant. Therefore, the proposed changes have been through two public hearing processes with the planning board. They've been through two discussions with the finance committee, two discussions with the Standing Committee on Municipal Regulations, and a couple of other discussions with the planning board outside of a public hearing, but at a public meeting. So this has been vetted for a while. This is not a new article by any means. This is simply a holdover from the previous town meeting. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, the purpose of these changes, these changes were made clear to me as a priority when I got hired approximately a year and a half ago. The goal is to improve the site plan approval thresholds to eliminate existing loopholes that allow significant non-residential projects to obtain permits without any review by town departments, the planning board, or the public. It's also to make the review process less extensive for small, non-residential projects. Because currently, the site plan approval regulations or thresholds, it's very one-size-fits-all. The same public hearing process is required for development of a big-box retail store or manufacturing warehouse as it would be for paving a few existing parking spaces by a non-residential property owner. The other goal of this is to update the regulations to reflect current requirements of the planning board in their submissions. Next slide, please. Here's an example of the current loopholes in the regulations. Because the thresholds are mostly based on a ratio and percentages of proposed square footage of change, under the existing thresholds, a building expansion between 5,000 and 19,999 square feet gross floor area triggers site plan approval with an increase of 20% or more to the gross floor area. That means an expansion of 19% of that building would not require any level of review by town staff, the planning board, or the public, and the developer could obtain building permits directly without going through a review process. That would equal an expansion of approximately 3,800 square feet for a building of almost 20,000 square feet. Another example, a building expansion of over 50,000 square feet triggers site plan approval with an increase of 5% or more to the gross floor area. That would mean an expansion of simply 4% doesn't require any level of review, and that would equal expansion of approximately 2,000 square feet for a building of almost 50,000 square feet. So, with the current thresholds involving percentages, as long as the developer comes in under the prescribed percentage for the size of the building they are looking at, they don't have to go through any department or public review at all. And that is a huge loophole in the current regulations. Next slide, please. So, the vast majority of these proposed changes are minor changes, updating submission requirements, changes to the number of paper copies required to reduce the amount of paper copies submitted. Again, the major change is the establishment of new thresholds for site plan approval and an administrative site plan approval process that includes review by department heads and may not require require public hearing for small projects under 500 square feet. There is an option to hold a public hearing at the recommendation of town staff or the planning board for a project that may have a detrimental impact on the Butters, even though it may fall under the prescribed threshold. So that is still on the table. That is not being ruled out. It would be on a case-by-case basis. Next slide, please. So here are some examples of thresholds for site plan approval for other communities. Town of Canton, 3,000 square feet, no administrative site plan approval. That means any project under 3,000 square feet does not require any level of review. Nor would 3,000 square feet if it increases gross floor area by 10% or more. No administrative site plan approval, so it's an all or nothing. Walpole and Randolph, 2,500 square feet each. Rainham, 1,200 square feet. Foxborough, 1,000 square feet. Franklin, 600 square feet. So as you can see, the proposed 500-square-foot threshold is not only more stringent than many of the other communities in the area and other communities in Massachusetts, but it is also actually somewhat stricter. It's stricter in a lot of ways than the current thresholds in the current zoning bylaws. Next slide, please. So the key points is the goal is to ensure the rights of all property owners in Stoneton to balance the right to develop property while protecting the Butters and the surrounding neighborhood. The changes won't only make the process less arduous for certain small projects, but they will also establish a review process for other small projects that aren't currently required to be reviewed. I pointed out some loopholes, and there are other such projects that I've used as examples. For instance, it seems like every spring you see a small piece of land that's essentially unusable start being used by a seasonal landscaping company, and you'll see them, you know, storing crushed stone and mulch and topsoil on a piece of property that had nothing on it the previous year. And that type of project currently does not require any type of site plan approval or review by any department. It simply falls through the cracks. These new regulations would catch a project like that, and that would get an administrative review by department heads. So the new thresholds are stricter than in most other communities, many of which don't require any level of review for projects that fall below them in a threshold. So not only that, but Stoneton is gonna have an administrative review for very minor projects where other towns don't have any type of review for projects that are much larger than what we're proposing. Under the administrative site plan approval, there is the option, again, to conduct an informal review by the planning board or conduct a public hearing if deemed appropriate. Next slide, please. And that's the end of the presentation, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Alright. Now, are you looking, just from my point of view, are you looking for a discussion now from the town meeting reps? Or?
Mr. Moderator, I think based on the procedure that I mentioned up front, we should now discuss the amended motion. And I'll read the amended motion, that the town vote to approve Article 14 is printed in the warrant with the following additional changes. At the end of the unnumbered first paragraph of Section 10.62, add the following new text. "In any case where a project qualifies for administrative site plan approval, the planning board be made aware of the project at its next regularly scheduled meeting." In the first sentence of 10.6.6, replace the words first class with the word certified. The origin of this motion came from-
Okay, hang on, hang on, Mr. Scardino. We just, I just want everybody to know, there was a second by Christine Howe on the record there. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Scardino.
Just to notify town meeting, this came from our extensive and pervasive public outreach. We had a member of the public make this suggestion so that administrative site plan approval wouldn't somehow fall off the radar. So that's why the first sentence requires it to be announced during a planning board meeting. And the second sentence, replacing the mail requirement with certified mail to make sure that in fact proper notification is made and recorded.
Okay, is that all?
Yes, it is, Mr. Moderator. For that, I open it up to discussion of questions.
Okay, thank you both, Mr. Scardino and Mr. John Charbonneau. Alright, first up is Jeffrey Iverson. Mr. Iverson, when you unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Yes, hi, Jeff Iverson, Precinct 1.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Surprise on the first one, but okay.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. You know, it really stood out to me that we have, or this proposal is one of the most strictest site plan approval thresholds in the region here, you know, in that slide that was shown. And only 500 square feet. I mean, that's that's not very much space at all. And I have some concerns that, you know, this is too restrictive and could dissuade you know, development in town in Stoneton and make us less competitive of an option.
Alright, Mr. Charbonneau, did you want to answer that?
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, it does, it in that slide, it does state that the current thresholds are do fall below other communities. However, considering the current one-size-fits-all nature of, you know, a good part of our regulations, it seemed like 500 square feet is a good place to start. You know, even though a lot of these changes are administrative and a lot of these changes are, you know, updates, you know, adding an administrative site plan approval process is a big step. A lot of towns don't have it. It's a good thing. However, the feeling was that, you know, we should walk before we run. And with comprehensive changes to our site plan approval process, to start out with a conservative threshold, and if the town has the appetite to ease up on that threshold going forward, or, you know, then we can certainly entertain that and a subsequent amendment at town meeting. However, considering the extent of these changes, I think the thought process was, you know, let's, let's, let's not get too crazy, let's not get too ambitious, let's let's get something on the books, and it is, it is making things, you know, easier for smaller projects, whereas, as I said, the example is right now, if a non-residential business owner has a dirt parking area with three spaces, if he wants to pave over those three parking spaces, he would have to go through a public hearing process with the planning board. This is actually putting in a process where they wouldn't have to do that, that they could come in for an informal meeting with department heads and simply get a review and potential recommendation from department heads. So, this is a step. This is to get an administrative site plan approval process in place, and then if the town feels that it's appropriate to make it more flexible going forward, then that's always an option.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Mr. Iverson, last question, if you have one?
Um, no, no more questions. It's just just still 500 square feet, really small, you know, higher administrative costs, you know, not you know, it's makes us frustrated, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Scott Carrara. Scott, Mr. Carrara, when you come in, please, when you get unmuted, unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Mr. Moderator, Scott Carrara, Precinct 2.
Yes, sir.
Through you to the planning board. This is a long time coming. I think it's a good thing. I don't think it's too restrictive. I get a lot of calls when people see stuff going on, they call you and they go, can you tell me what's going on? Like, like I know what's going on in every backyard. And they ask questions, and I tell them they gotta either call the building department to talk to, you know, zoning, or Mr. Erickson, or they gotta call over to engineering and square things out. But through you to the planning board chairman, I hope that, and to Mr. Charbonneau, I hope that when he says, oh, there's a small piece of property, and then the spring landscaper puts stuff on there, or somebody starts to use industrial use, that they might talk to the zoning board with the fact that you need two acres to do that type of work. So that's the zoning, and I can't hope that they allow these people to come in and go, oh, I'm glad you stopped by to let us know you're gonna store material, and then the neighbor gets upset, because it's going on all over town. So that's all I got to say, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Next up is Robert Cohen. Mr. Cohen, you when you can unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Mr. Moderator, through the
Precinct number, please, Mr. Cohen.
Robert Cohen, Precinct 5. To the the planning, the planner. On your first article in 14, you just have to walk into the department, show them the plans. He says, yes, you can go along with it. The second part of this substitute is, and let the planning board know what's going on. Am I interpreting this right, or am I not?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Charbonneau, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to answer that. I'd just like to explain that what the process would be would be a potential, a property owner would come in looking for an administrative site plan approval. It's not as simple as walking into town hall and having myself, the engineering department, or somebody else take a look at and say, okay, you're good to go. It's not a rubber stamp. What it is, is it would be similar to the current process under full site plan approval, where there's a pre-application meeting with department heads that's required. So, it, you know, the plans would be taken in, they would be distributed to the relevant department heads, and then a meeting would be scheduled, albeit an informal meeting during the day. Now, that doesn't happen overnight, because people's schedules are very busy, and town staff would need appropriate time to review the plans prior to that informal meeting. So in the meantime, at the next planning board meeting, which happens every two weeks, so it wouldn't be, you know, it's not as if the planning board meets once a month, so it'd be holding things up. An announcement would be made at the next planning board meeting that there would be an upcoming administrative site plan review meeting happening. So it's not as simple as coming in and getting a checkmark in a box. All the department heads would have police, fire, DPW, engineering, border health, et cetera, conservation would all get a chance to review it and make comments and potential potential, you know, modifications to the plan, or things that added to the plan if it's appropriate. And as I stated, you know, it could be, even though it's a small project, depending on the neighborhood and depending on the location, because not, you know, not all sites are created equally. It could be deemed that an informal meeting, you know, an informal discussion at a public meeting of the planning board may be necessitated to get their feedback, or it could be a full public hearing may be required where notification to a Butters is sent. So there is that flexibility there.
If I could also add very quickly through the moderator, this is not a vote. It's not that our staff votes and it's a majority approval. In order for this to get through our staff, whatever it is that our staff is requiring has to be done. So it's not that three of the people standing around can say, yeah, we like it, and the other four don't. It's the expert opinion of each expert around the table and the recommendation and requirements that each of those experts put on this for it to happen.
Correct.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Cohen.
I'd like to get the view of the chairman of the Joe Scardino. I'd like to get his opinion of this, too.
He's chairman of the planning board?
I know, I had a memory lapse there.
That's alright, trying to help you out there, sir.
Thank you very much.
First of all, Mr. Cohen.
Your name is Cohen, C-O-H-A-N, not Cohen. I don't want to be mixed up with someone else.
Gentlemen, no cross-debate. Thank you.
Must have been the gremlin in the computer. The planning board did support this unanimously. I just want to inform the public that site plan review is a creature of local statute, and we need the tools in order to review and analyze and protect the town in these projects from suit by developers where they don't adhere to the requirements. And so, we're talking about one piece of this, but the bylaw in itself has been tightened up and made much more functional as far as allowing and facilitating the approval of projects based on the experience the planning boards had over the last decade with our site plan review bylaw. And thanks to Mr. Charbonneau's guidance, we've been able to clean up some of these issues with this bylaw.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Next up is Carolyn Campbell. Carolyn, Ms. Campbell, when you able to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Campbell, um, precinct five, I'm the chair of the municipal regulations committee. Uh, we voted. In favor of this article. We found overall that it addresses. It takes a bylaw and makes it much more coherent and addresses needs that weren't, that were not. Are not currently there. And I would recommend that we approve the article as amended. The amendment that the planning board put through tonight addresses probably the main. That came up at our public hearing about people not necessarily knowing that. A project was being submitted for administrative site plan approval. Or the public not necessarily knowing that a project was being, um. Submitted for administrative site plan approval and by notifying the planning board, that kind of takes care of the public knowledge of that. And, you know, there are iss- you know, some, if there's one or two issues within it, I think having the bylaw and seeing what happens is a. Much better way to proceed than trying to rewrite it. On the bo- on the floor or to just reject the whole thing because you don't like one sentence.
Tisdale, did you wanna add anything? You have to unmute yourself, Mark. There you go.
You hear me?
Yes, we do. Go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
Okay, uh, I just want to, uh, you know, thank John and the planning board. And, you know, for, um, bringing this forward. I think what this pro- what this article actually does is codify something, puts a process in place of something similar that we already do. Uh, in town. Um, you know, being in charge of all development services groups, the building department, uh, border health, conservation, uh, planning, engineering. Um, it really pulls everybody together. It fixes, fixes a few loopholes, um. Previous speaker said the five hundred square foot issue is pretty, pretty restrictive. Um, that's something that we could be, adjust if we feel that it's restrictive in the future, but for example, the existing bylaws has any increase in impervious area. So if, if a business wanted to go pave one parking spot, you'd need to go through a whole public hearing with the, with the planning board. This actually fixes that where it says five spaces or less. Uh, also an increase in impervious area of a thousand square feet or less, uh, can be administrative site plan review. And, uh, for example, a driveway that's for a house fifty feet from the road, say it's twenty feet wide, that's a thousand square feet. Most houses are about a thousand square feet of impervious area, so it's not a large area. Um, so I'm definitely, uh, in favor of this, uh, it definitely codifies something. Right now, it's, we have a great process in place with the people in place, but ten years from now, if we're not there. And you had somebody say, a, a building inspector that didn't wanna follow the rules, um, and we didn't have this. He could issue building permits with no other departments, department heads having any sort of say, uh, on the project. Uh, one, one more point, if I can make it. Um, it, the other main change to this, this document, I think is great. Um, it deter- it requires the building department to be involved very early on and get a zoning determination letter. Um, for a project that comes in before it goes to the planning board. So, uh, in the past, we've had projects that come in, they get all the approvals from whatever boards in town, then they submit their building permit package. To the building department and then, oops, we, we don't meet something in zoning. So this requires the building inspector do, to do a zoning review before the project goes through all those. All those steps. So I think it's a pretty good, uh, bylaw.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Carolyn Campbell, are you all set? Do you have any other comments or questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry, I got one more point to make. Sorry, Bob.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale, go ahead.
I, I, it slipped my mind. I, I think it's a very important point. Um, the motion says section ten point six two. And I think we wanna say ten, section ten point six point two. We want another point in there.
I see where you say that, right? That's under the substitute motion?
Yeah.
Okay, uh. The cloud, you wanna, Mark, do you, okay, Mr. Scardino? You read that motion, um?
Uh, no, I, I think that was generated, um. Uh, and, and submitted, but, uh, that's a obvious typo and I think under any of the moderators' rules. Uh, that decimal point would be, uh, not require any further amendment.
Right, uh, uh, yeah, it's a, it's a typo with the PowerPoint. That's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Chabino, any further comments?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to point out one thing, even though it seems like a small change, um, in the substitute motion. Replacing the requirement of first class mail for butters notifications with certified mail is extremely important because. Just in my short time with the town. I've had multiple projects before the planning board that fall under a lot of scrutiny with the butters. And to make sure that we, that the, the staff and the, the applicant. And the butters, it protects everybody to make sure that we have a record of the butters notifications when they go out. And who they're sent to is extremely important because this has caused some confusion with multiple projects before the planning board in my short time. So. Um, you know, when they go out by first class mail, there's no, there's no record of when they went out. Or verification that they went out to all the, the parties in interest. So this will protect the town. The butters and the applicant all at once. So. We have a record in our file of the butters notifications that went out, the exact date. And who they went to. So there will be a, a physical record to reference if a question comes up about a butters notifications.
We have one more, uh, town meeting rep that would like to have a statement or a question, Kristen Vale. When you're, unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Kristen Vale, precinct five. I'd just like to move the question, Mr. Moderator.
Seconded by Cynthia Walsh. Okay, yep, I just need to. Okay, first, we're gonna move on, uh, excuse me, we're gonna vote on cutting off debate, move the question. All right, uh, that's what the issue at hand right now is. All right, so we gotta clear the raised hands. Once I'm informed that the hands have been cleared, we'll move forward. Okay, they're cleared. All right, all those in favor of cutting off the bait, debate, raise your hand now, please. Ten seconds. Okay, if I can get the, the count on raised hands. Okay, if we can clear the raised hands right now, please. And please inform me when the hands are cleared. Okay, all those who wanna vote no, please raise your hand now. Ten seconds. Okay, if I can get a count on the number of raised hands. Four. All right, uh. To cut off debate, yes, one oh four, no, four. It passes by a two thirds vote. Debate has, uh, been cut off. Now, just to clarify things, we're gonna do two different votes here. First, we have to vote on the amendment, which is gonna be a simple majority vote. All right, I have to just double check with, detect people to see if we have a poll for that. I'm not sure if we're doing that, we might have to use raised hands. All right. Right, okay, we don't have a poll for, uh, the amended motion, so we're gonna do raised hands to make it easy for everybody. This is just on the amendment now, please. This is just requires a majority vote on the, uh, on the amended motion. That you see, uh. Before you were there. Uh, if we, if I can get a, uh, uh, information that the hands raised is, the raised hands have been cleared. Okay, they're cleared. This is for the amendment to the main motion. All those in favor of the amendment, simple majority, raise your hand, please. Ten seconds. Okay, if I can get a count on the raised hands. All right, clear the hands, please. Once I'm informed that the hands raised have been cleared. Okay, all those opposed? Please raise your hand now. Ten seconds. Okay, if I can get a count on the vote?
Nine.
Nine. This is, uh, simple majority, yes, one oh eight, no, nine. The motion, the amendment motion passes by a simple majority. All right, now, we're gonna go back to the main motion, which requires a zoning. Uh, plan. As amended, article fourteen, as amended, requires a two thirds vote. We're gonna have a poll on this. Once we have the poll up, there's, there's the poll, article fourteen, as amended, site plan review by law modification as amended. Yes, no abstain or abstain, please vote now. Ten seconds. Okay, let's end the poll and let's show the results. All right. One oh six, yes. Fourteen plus one, no is fifteen, abstentions two. A motion passes by two thirds vote, one oh six, yes. Fifteen, no, two abstentions. All right, thank you all for voting and thank you all for your patience through that, uh, article there. All right, we're gonna move on to, that was article fourteen, we're gonna move on to article fifteen. It appears on page twenty six. In your warrant books, page twenty six in your warrant books, please. And let me just check my, um, my sheet here. I'm gonna have my ass joining Zavino. Chair, the acting chair of the FENCOM to please read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Yeah, yeah, it took, I guess it took a bit to let me in. Um, and can I just ask Bob that, since all these motions are different than what's in the book. Can we get these posted to the virtual front table so people can have them for the records? Could we have that done?
Sorry, I was muted, uh, yes, I'll, I request that to be done immediately.
All right, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, article fifteen, uh, the Cedar Hill Golf Course Greens Sprayer. I moved that the town vote to appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to purchase a green sprayer. For the Cedar Hill Golf Course and all other incidental and related costs. And further, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board. To borrow such sums pursuant to general law, chapter forty four, subsection seven or eight. Uh, or any other enabling authority and issue bonds and notes therefore. And although there will be, these will be general obligation bonds to the town. It's anticipated that they will be repaid through the Cedar Hill Golf Course Enterprise Fund. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote. Less any premium applied to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes. May be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with general law, chapter forty four, section. Twenty, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. And the finance committee voted twelve to three on September sixteenth to recommend this to town meeting.
Right, do I have a second, please? Seconded by Christine Howe. All right, let me just read the municipal, um. Let me see, excuse me, let me read, um, the next committee, the municipal operations committee. Voted five to zero to one to recommend approval of the town meeting, as printed in the warrant on page twenty seven. Uh, right, uh, the presentation, I believe, Dr. Grimm?
Yes, and, um, Victor is also on, our, our, um, head of our golf course is also on at the meeting, I believe. Uh, so this was one of the few things that we added to the fall town meeting because Victor approached me and said that he could no longer patch together the piece of equipment he is. Using to do the spraying of the greens. It is a nineteen eighty six piece of equipment that he has managed to patch together to this point. Um, the way it has to be used and the way it's patched together is actually getting to a point where it's not even. Uh, something that fall into OSHA requirements, it's horribly outdated. Um, and it's, it's time for something new. I would like to just briefly say. That, uh, the golf course financially is doing extraordinarily well. Our nineteen twenty year that ended on June thirtieth. Uh, and I believe Victor has the actual numbers, but surpassed significantly. Our twenty eighteen nineteen year, which is what we had to base our subsidy on, so we were actually. Believe that we could subsidize less. Uh, over and our goal is of course not to have to subsidize the golf course at all. We may find that that happens this upcoming year. Uh, currently, the golf course is on track to make its projected annual budget. Within the next month and a half, if November happened to be a good month, we, we, we conceivably by the end. End of the year could already make our numbers for the end of June or be very, very close. We're making over fifty thousand dollars a month right now. I also wanna point out that we have a new concessionaire with a new contract, they pay rent, they will be paying seventy five percent of our utilities through the winter. I point all this out because we do feel confident that we can borrow. And the Golf Course Enterprise Fund can be, can withstand this type of borrowing. It, it, we are very close to it being a self sustaining fund. Which is ultimately our goal. Uh, it's also active with our recreation department right now. We use the facility, the outdoor facility for drive-in movies that have been very successful. And there was a summer golf program that, uh, Victor also ran in conjunction with Matt Koshon from Recreation. Where we encouraged adults to come back after they did the recreation program with kids. For a free round of golf, we have since seen those people return. This is simply part of maintaining the quality of that golf course so that we continue to have this kind of progress. And Victor is on for any specific questions. Thank you.
Dr. Grimm, all right, our first speaker is Forrest Lindwall. Mr. Lindwall, when you're unable, when you're able to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Hi, yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Forrest Lindwall, precinct five, and I'm vice chair of the Cedar Hill Golf Course Operations Committee. And I do wanna speak, uh, again and thank you to town meeting for. The funding support for the, uh, uh, expansion of the golf to include a par five hole. That work was done on time and on budget, actually finished up, uh, late May. Uh, early June and unfortunately, a way too hot and way too dry summer season. Kind of retarded the, the growth of the turf to establish, but, uh, I walked it last week. I believe Victor can answer if they opened it. Uh, this past week for play, um, absolutely looks terrific. Uh, I, obviously, I support this particular article to keep the golf course trending upward. And, uh, I also wanna, uh, extend my gratitude and kudos to Victor. I'm part of the senior set that goes grocery shopping at six AM on Sunday mornings and, uh. I look in the golf course and the lights are on, Victor's truck is there. And he's ready for business at six AM on a Sunday morning. He's a very dedicated employee. Uh, and thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Hey, Mr. Lindwall. All right, uh, next up is Mr. Peter Banus. I'm not sure if you have a, um, that was intentional or not, Mr. Banus, just let us know. Give you a couple of seconds to unmute yourself. Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, Mr. Brian Holmes. When you have a chance to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number. Brian Holmes? Okay.
Hey, Mr. Moderator, Brian Holmes, precinct three, good evening. Uh, through you, sir, to Mr. Berusa. Uh, Victor, can you talk a little bit about what this machine is designed to do?
Uh, can you hear me?
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Really?
How about now, everyone all right?
Pretty weak.
Yes, we can hear you. Just speak a little louder, that's okay.
All right, thank you to Forrest Lindwall and everybody else. But so this machine is designed to spray the greens. It is, we put chemicals down, we put micronutrients down, we use it on the fairways, we use it on the tee boxes. The machine that we have, as Dr. Grimm said, is from nineteen eighty-six. It is unable to be calibrated at this point without completely rebuilding the pumping system. The clutch, the electric clutch on the pump needs to be rebuilt. The clutch on the machine, on the actual motor, needs to be rebuilt. Needs a new, it needs brakes, it does not have brakes at this point. So currently, we are not able to put down the appropriate amount of chemicals or know exactly what we're putting down, which is kind of a dangerous situation when you're using chemicals and working with the environment. I do my very best to try to make sure that we use, as we stay as organic as we possibly can, put down the safest chemicals that we can, not just for the environment, but for our golfers and guests and wildlife. With a new machine, we're gonna be able to cut down on the maintenance hours, especially the DPW who's been coming by to help me. I'm sure they'll be greatly appreciative. Repair costs are gonna drop. We can safely calibrate it so we can put down the appropriate quantities of chemicals and nutrients and ultimately end up with a better product on top of all that.
Thank you.
Town meeting, I would ask that you support article fifteen. The town meeting of a couple of years ago invested a half a million dollars so that we could make a par-five hole on the sixth hole. Obviously, the previous speaker indicated that that hole has been opened. I like to, I'm pleased to hear the sound of the words trending upward. And it seems to me that the golf course is becoming its own financially sustainable organization within the town and it's a hidden gem. You have to spend money to make money, and we did that by investing a half a million dollars in the course. And in my opinion, you have to spend money to protect your investment. And I think that's what the golf course director and town manager are attempting to do here. So I'd ask support for article fifteen, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. All right, next up is John, excuse me, Joseph Piana. Mr. Piana, when you get, when you can unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number. Mr. Piana, you're unmuted. Go ahead, sir. Name and precinct number, please. I'll give you a couple more seconds and we can always come back to you. I gotta try to go to Peter Banus. We had to bypass him. Mr. Banus, if you could unmute yourself when you get a moment and state your name and precinct number. Peter Banus.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to, I wanted to put in a word the fact that the improvement in the courses is pretty impressive and it's nice to hear that we're so successful. So I would appreciate people considering voting for this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banus.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr., we'll try again, Joseph Piana. We'll give you a couple more seconds to see if you can unmute yourself. We can come back to you if time allows. Okay, Mr. Piana, go ahead, sir. Okay. We're gonna move on since time is of the essence here. Next up is John Lenehan. Mr. Lenehan, when you get, get yourself unmuted, please state your name and precinct number.
John Lenehan, precinct one. And I just want to echo the sentiments of Mr. Holmes. He said a lot of what I was gonna say, but you can't run a golf course without investing in the capital to do it. I think the golf course is beginning to, while one year is not a trend, it's showing the hard work and diligence of both Victor and the committee. So I would ask that people support this.
Thank you, Mr. Lenehan.
Thank you.
Next up is Eric Coleman. Mr. Coleman, when you get a chance to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number.
Eric Coleman, precinct five, I moved the question, the previous question.
Okay, it's been moved, the question has been moved to cut off debate, seconded by Cynthia Walsh, precinct two. Just give me a moment here, ladies and gentlemen. All right, cut off debate, motion has been made by moving the question. All right, we're just gonna clear the raised hands. This is just to cut off debate. All right, once I hear that raised hands have been cleared. Okay, to cut off debate, to vote yes, please raise your hand now. Ten seconds. Okay, if I can get a count, please. Okay, all right, can we clear the hands, please? Once I get informed that the hands have been cleared. Okay, all those opposed, please vote now, raise your hand. Please raise your hand now, to vote no. Okay, if I can get a count on the nos. Three. All right, to cut off debate, passes, yes, one oh two. No, three, passed by two-thirds. All right, we're gonna move to the article fifteen, Cedar Hill Golf Course Greens Sprayer. Dr. Grimm, do you have any summary statement or anything?
Nope.
Nope, we're good to go. This is a borrowing article. This is a borrowing article, it's a two-thirds vote required. Article fifteen, Cedar Hill Golf Course Greens Spray. If I can have the poll put on the screen, please. The poll is before you. Article fifteen, Cedar Hill Golf Greens Spray, a two-thirds vote required, please vote now. Ten seconds, please. Okay, if we're getting the poll. And show the results. Okay, as you can see, the results, yes, one oh two, plus one is one oh three for yes. No is eighteen. Abstentions, two. Passes by two-thirds majority. Article fifteen, the motion is, has been passed by two-thirds. All right, we're moving on to article sixteen. If we can show that on the screen when we're ready. I got a call from Mr. John Inzavino to make the motion, please. You have to move the screen down, please, to the tech team. We just can't, there you go, thank you very much. Oh, you moved it up again. It's moving around a little bit, there you go. Can I say, oh no, that's seventeen, we need sixteen. Hang on a second, John.
Yeah, yeah, I'm waiting.
We just gotta slide that down a little bit. I don't know if we can do that, get a call.
Well, if you leave it there, I can, I can read that.
Okay.
If, if that's the whole, if that's the whole motion.
I'm just looking, looks like it is. Has that been, I'm just gonna ask.
From the tech team, it looks like that is the whole motion. That's what we have on the full side, at least.
Yes, it is, John.
I can see that, Bob, I can read that.
Thank you very much, John, go ahead, sir.
All right. I moved at the town vote to approve article sixteen as set forth in the warrant and as funding therefore to transfer the sum of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund FY twenty-one budgeted annual reserve.
Okay, can I have a second? Seconded by Christine Howe. All right, Mr. Inzavino, could you read the FENCOM's report, please?
Yeah, the Finance Committee voted thirteen to two to recommend this to town meeting. Approval of this article.
I'll read the Municipal Operations Committee report on page twenty-eight. They voted six to zero to recommend approval of the town meeting. All right, excuse me for one minute. I believe Craig Horstfall, the Assistant Town Engineer, is gonna present some information on this along with Mr. Eric Coleman and maybe Mark Tisdale. Is Craig Horstfall gonna go first? Craig, if you're on.
Eric, did you want to say a few words on behalf of the Development Committee first, or do you want to?
Sure, I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Eric, why don't you introduce yourself?
Yeah, Eric Coleman, precinct five, I'm the chairperson of the Glen Echo Committee. And this is an article, this article was originally put in, not with the amount of money that we're asking for, but a lesser amount in two thousand and fifteen. And we couldn't do what we wanted to do with the amount of money that was approved in two thousand and fifteen. It shows an increase in the costs over that period of time. And as part of the application to the Community Preservation Committee, we had to provide them, we provided them with excellent plans by the Engineering Department. We received approval from the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Police Department, Fire Department, Department of Public Works, and the Open Space Committee. The plans show a paved road fifteen feet wide with shoulders of two and a half feet on either side so it can accommodate a fire truck. The road also has areas that cars can pull off to the side and let traffic through. There's gonna be a timed gate at the entrance so that people will not be able to drive in in the off-hours and cause havoc. Other requested public safety features will be there as well. And as far as parking is concerned, we've got forty-three spaces, of which seventeen will be paved and twenty-six will be gravel. And this includes three spots for handicapped access. And there's gonna be handicapped access to tables as well as the great lawn and availability of the sanitary facilities. When I speak of Glen Echo and when we hear about the project, what we hear about is what's taking so long? So let me try to give you a rundown of what's happened and then what's going to happen. So I mentioned article forty-five in the, in the two thousand and fifteen town meeting passed three hundred and four thousand dollars for design, constructions, materials, and equipment. Then we had preliminary drawings from the engineering. And I believe some fences were removed to get things going to make it more accessible. Then we obtained conservation restriction from the Commonwealth that took a couple of years. And through the work of Forrest Lindwald, we were able to get it going and finally get it done at no cost. Then there were, engineering wrote the bid specifications. Bids were advertised, bids came in, but they were over budget. So to mitigate that, the project was split into a couple parts. The first part, we had the money for, and this is to get, we got, this is for tree work and erosion control. So we procured three quotes for that. We found a good quote, the lowest quote, and the work is in progress now. Mark, is it completed at this point?
Yeah, yeah, the, actually, as of yesterday, all the trees within the liminal work have been removed and the erosion controls are installed.
Okay, so we're moving along with this.
Gentlemen, I need to interrupt you for a minute since you're going back and forth. I have a point of personal privilege by George Delensky. I'd like to recognize George, if you have a point of personal privilege, George.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, it's twenty-five to eleven at this point, and I think this article deserves the proper consideration. And I would tend to think that I would move and like to move that this article be continued on Monday night because we're not gonna be able to finish this evening. And I do have a number of questions about this article and a number of concerns. And I would move that this article be continued from, as the first article, on Monday night at seven o'clock.
Mr. Delensky, I have, I need Town Council to weigh in on this since we have a motion on the floor, we're talking about the motion. Just one moment, please. The moderator's decision is that I think we should continue the meeting to Monday night. We're gonna act on the motion to continue to October twenty-sixth, I believe, if that date is correct, at seven PM. I want to just mention to Mr. Coleman and Mr. Tisdale, I appreciate all the comments, but it's best to continue this on Monday evening at seven PM, just so it's all fresh. What was that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, there's point of order, George Delensky, you have a point of order this time?
No, this was in regard to what we just discussed. I made my point, you've already agreed with it. And I think we should just move on to say goodnight for tonight and go on to Monday night.
Thank you, George, I appreciate those comments. All right, we're gonna have to, one second. Brian Holmes, you have a point of order, please? You have a point of order before I take the vote? There was a motion made, but I just have to recognize the point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I would, I would draw the point of order. I was gonna say let it ride, but it's, you're the moderator, so I would draw.
Yeah, I don't want to fall asleep on people while we discuss this, so let's.
That'd be kind of funny.
Yes, I'm sure it would be.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Inzavino, do you have a point of order?
Yes, I do. Because you're looking to continue, this article was brought up, the motion was made. I think what we should do is, I think there should be a motion to table article sixteen until, until Monday. And then you just look to adjourn this meeting until Monday at seven o'clock on the October twenty-sixth. But I think, I think that would be the proper way is to table this one because it's already been started.
All right, we can do that too, Mr. Inzavino.
Thank you.
You want to make that motion?
Yeah, I move we table article sixteen until seven PM on October twenty-sixth, Monday evening.
I have a second.
Second.
Second, okay. It's been moved and seconded, okay, this is by raised hand to move this, to table this article till Monday. All right, can we clear the raised hands, please? And let me know when the hands are, the raised hands are clear. Please. Please, uh, don't raise your hands yet. We're clearing the, the screen there. Okay. This is on the motion to table. Please raise your hand now to vote yes for the motion to table till Monday. Ten seconds. All right, if I can get a count of the raised hands. All right, can we clear the raised hands? Okay, all those opposed, raise your hand now, please. Okay, can I get a count on the raised hands? Twenty-two. Motion to table this article till Monday, October twenty-sixth at seven PM is passed. Eighty-seven, yes, twenty-two, no. All right, now we gotta go back to... Gotta get a motion to adjourn the meeting to Monday night.
So move, Mr. Moderator.
I know, I'm ju, I'm just trying to go through the process here, Mr. Delensky. Appreciate your patience.
Oh, no problem. I was just making the motion.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. It's been seconded by, uh, Cynthia Walsh. Motion to continue the meeting to October twenty-sixth, seven PM. All right, uh, we got to do the raised hands again. Can I, can, can we clear the raised hands, please? And please let me know when they're clear. Oh, I'm sorry. I just, for clarification, it will be a Zoom virtual meeting on the webinar again, Monday the twenty-sixth of October, seven PM. Are we, are the hands raised clear? Please, please don't raise your hand till I give you the signal to go. Go, okay. All those in favor, raise your hand now. Ten seconds. All right, can I get a count on the raised hands? Okay, clear the raised hands. Please let me know when they're cleared. Okay, all those opposed, vote, raise your hand now. Ten seconds. Can I get a count, please? Six. Motion passes to continue the meeting to Monday from, yes, ninety-eight, no, six. Motion is passed. Thank you all for your participation this evening and your cooperation. Uh, we'll see you Monday evening, virtual meeting again. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good job.
Thank you all for participating, all panel members and Town Meeting reps for being patient with us. We appreciate it.
Can't wait to see your new outfit for Monday night, Bob.
George, can you pick out something for me?
I will definitely. I think we should go with a little bit more of the, uh, reddish color this time.
Get him a nice flat, George. Get him a nice flat one with some color.
Everybody have a good evening. I want to sign off now before you...
Take care, Bob.